Let me start by welcoming everyone. At the moment, we have thirty-five attendees, and as I was saying, I will try to mention the number of attendees as we go along, since I realize you guys can't see all necessarily the same information. So I'll do the best I can. So why don't we start with roll call, Laura?
Commissioner Golden?
I'm here.
Commissioner Haskell?
Here.
Commissioner Targ? Not present yet. Vice Chair Koff still?
Here.
Chair Taylor?
Present. Great, thank you. So we've got a quorum. All right, so what I'd like to do is start off with oral communications from the public. This is on any topics that aren't on the agenda for this evening. So if this is about Neely, we'll get to that when we get to the first agenda item. But if you have some other comment or question for the commission that you'd like to do that's not related to that, now's the time. So I see one hand up, Rita, Rita Combs. And Dylan, are you going to promote them so that they can unmute themselves, etc.?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for mentioning Chair Taylor about the number of attendees. It's important for the residents to know how many people and what Sharon Hanlon's been doing. Sorry about that, but what Sharon Hanlon has been doing is next to her name, writing the number of attendees. And that's how we've been seeing how many attendees have been at the town council meetings, and it's really appreciated. And I'd also like to mention in the minutes for this particular meeting or any meeting, if they could be thorough, there were quite a few residents that had mentioned that in your last meeting, but in looking over the minutes, and yes, I know you're going to be doing the minutes as part of the agenda at the end of the evening, but those minutes do not actually reflect all of the comments, the thorough comments that the most of the residents had talked about about not having thorough minutes. So it's kind of, you know, one of those things that's living itself. So hopefully, out of this meeting, that the minutes can be a little more thorough. And yes, people can look at the recordings, but for most people, they actually review the minutes, and it would be nice to see the names of the people that attended the meeting also as part of the minutes, not just the people that had an opportunity to speak their two to three minutes. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Yeah, um, you know, there's always a compromise between having minutes that are an exact transcript and minutes that capture the essence. And I've been asking staff to focus more on sort of capturing the essence. I also want to encourage people, and obviously for tonight's meeting, for people to write to us. You know, an email is the best way to communicate because that way, all the residents see it, all the commissioners see it, the presenters, you know, see it. So that I always think is sort of the best thing that we can do. But yeah, we keep working, and it looks like we got Dylan's got it. So we've got meeting attendees at forty-one, which is now to forty-three, but we'll try to keep it as up to date as we can. So thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Looks like Christie, Christie Corley, you're up next.
Yes, thank you for taking my comment. I know that you're working hard on the urgent ordinance, and we would appreciate any updates or how the public can be involved with developing that ordinance. Some of us have been going to many meetings, A-Bag meetings, Housing Element meetings. We might have some nuggets that we would like to add to any comments or thoughts that you're working on, and I haven't heard anything in a couple of weeks on updates with that. I appreciate anything you have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other public comments not on topics for tonight's meeting? All right, so seeing none, let's move on to the first agenda item this evening. So many of you have joined us before, and I appreciate that, and you sort of understand how this all works. But I wanted to lay it out for anybody who's new, and just as a reminder. So the way the agenda item will sort of play out is we'll start with the staff report. And you know, staff will give us an overview of the project. And then that will follow with any questions the commissioners have. And the goal there is to clarify the staff report. It's not to get into discussion, it's just to try to clarify the staff report. And then that applicant is the president. I'm allocated up to hopefully, they'll be brief. I think we might have a long meeting, so I think shorter is better. But I've allocated up to twenty minutes for the applicant presentation. And then after that, it's going to be open for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. And I'm going to try to keep everybody to that three minutes, just because I think we're going to have a lot of people who want to comment. I would encourage everyone who wants to speak to join us. If somebody's already said what you had to say, you don't necessarily have to repeat it. You can just say, you know, they made a really good comment and move on. So I want to hear from everybody, but don't feel like you have to restate things kind of over and over again. One thing we're going to do tonight is I've got two groups that have pooled their minutes into nine-minute presentations, so there'll be two public comments. Basically, three people pulled their minutes, and so that'll just be one presentation. After that, I'm going to give the applicant like five minutes for any rebuttal or any, you know, if they want to answer any questions that came up in the public section. And then what we've been trying to do, and I think it's been pretty successful, is sometimes questions get asked in the public comment period. And to the degree that Laura or the staff are, you know, able to answer those questions, I'll have them answer the questions that seem relevant that sort of haven't been covered either by the applicant or in the process of commissioners asking questions. And then finally, after that, I will close it to sort of public conversation and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and decision. Once I close it to the public, at that point, I will not take more public. In other words, this isn't an interactive conversation. After we're done with the public comments, then we move to the commission, and it's a commission discussion at that point. So I just want to make sure everybody understood sort of how we're going to lay things out. So with that, I see we have one hand up. Dan, is this an oral communication or is this on the first item? I'm assuming this is Dan Abreen.
I'm out, that was a mistake. I was pushing the wrong button, as usual.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
No, I'm just listening.
Okay, great. All right, so let's start with the staff report, Laura.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Taylor, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. We're here tonight to talk about the request for amendments to the conditional use permits for the Neely Winery 555 Portola Road, known as Spring Ridge, multiple names that we know it has. And we're here tonight with a team of people to make a presentation to you and try to answer any questions. So as some background, the Planning Commission has reviewed this project four times before. Back in April of 2019, there was a general discussion and introduction to the project. A number of questions were raised at that time, and a lot of public started to participate. So we wanted to go slowly and consider each of the major components of the project. So in November of 2019, we talked about general plan consistency, and the staff report and minutes are available online for that. And then we went on in December of 2019 to talk about zoning code, municipal code consistency. And then in February of 2020, there was a discussion by the Planning Commission on the findings for approval and other municipal code connections. So after that initial preliminary discussion by the Planning Commission, the applicant has been making revisions to the proposal. And we found after that initial conversation from the Planning Commission, it was an appropriate time to start the review under CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. So we hired a consultant to start to undertake that work. There were significant delays due to the pandemic in our ability to process that application and complete that environmental review. But as you know, we started to continue and go back to some of those projects that had been delayed because of the pandemic. And so now that work has been completed, so it's time to resume the public meetings on the project. So that's why we're here this evening, to present this information to the Planning Commission. So now I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Costa Sanders, who's our consultant planner, and she's going to give the presentation from here. So thank you very much.
Good evening, thank you very much for the introduction, Laura. I'm Lisa Costa Sanders, contract planner, and also with us this evening, Karz Silver, Town Attorney, Barbara Beard with MIG. She's the CEQA consultant that the town hired to evaluate the project. And then her team includes Gary Black from Hexagon Transportation Consultants, Chris Dugan, MIG Noise, and David Gallagher, who did the biological. So they will all be available to answer any of your questions after the staff presentation. Just a quick bit of background, as you're aware, the current applicant acquired the 229-acre property in 1995. In 2000, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit for the use of thirteen point five acres for vineyard with winery operations limited to property grown grapes. In 2012, Planning Commission approved a use permit to allow building and site improvements. And then in 2013, the Planning Commission amended those two use permits to include an additional five point five acres of new vineyard area and added that to the winery operations. The subject site is located at 555 Portola Road. The site is adjacent to the Windy Hill Trail and Open Space, and as you know, accessed by Portola Road. And there was just a closer view of the subject site. In this pink square area is the area that the proposed conditional use permit, as well as the modifications to the site are all located. So that's the location of the agriculture building and the site improvements. And another aerial view of the site, as you see at the top, is the agriculture building, the existing driveway and parking area. The applicant submitted an application in December of 2018 to amend the conditional use permits to allow wine tasting and sales on-site and events, as well as an architectural and site development review for site improvements. As Laura indicated, the Planning Commission conducted the preliminary review of this project over several meetings. The applicant revised the project in response to community and planning commission feedback. The BPTS received the traffic study, it's October sixth meeting, and the ASCC reviewed the architectural and site development review at its October eleventh meeting. As outlined in the staff report, the applicant proposes to conduct wine tasting and sales on-site. All tastings will be conducted by a reservation appointment only. The applicant proposes to limit Friday and Sunday visitors to sixty per day and proposes to limit Saturday to a total of seventy-two visitors with a maximum of thirty visitors during any single hour. Weekday visitors would be limited to thirty visitors per day. The applicant is also requesting wine club distribution days. That would be for wine club members only. There will be no rentals to outside groups and no regular public visits during these distribution days. So this includes six standard distribution days with a total of a hundred and fifty persons, including staff, between the hours of noon and five p.m., and three special release days with a total of ninety-six total persons, including staff. And those events would occur from five thirty to nine thirty p.m. with staggered visitors during those hours. The events will include a caterer and an attendant that would oversee parking, and no amplified music would be played outside. The applicant would also like to conduct one Portola Valley Community Day, that would just be once. During that day, discounted tastings and sales would be available to Portola Valley residents as well as Spirit Influence residents who are not wine club members, and that would be limited to a total of a hundred and fifty persons for that day, including staff. As discussed at your previous meetings, there are several findings the commission is required to make to amend the conditional use permit. These findings are discussed in more detail in the staff report, but I'll go ahead and review each finding for you now. The proposed use or facility is properly located in relation to the community as a whole and the land use and transportation services in the vicinity. The proposal, the proposed application before you does include measures to improve site visibility and safety. The site is located less than a mile from Village Square and Town Center and is well-served by Portola Road. Traffic study found that there would be no impact with the proposed use. Next finding relates to the size and shape of the property is adequate to accommodate the proposed use and that the proposed use would be compatible with land uses normally permitted in the surrounding area and the rural outlook of neighboring residences. The overall site is 229 acres in area. The use is proposed to be conducted within the agricultural building, which is eighty-five feet from the side property line and three hundred and forty feet from the front property line. And as indicated, the traffic study found the proposed parking would be adequate for regular tastings as well as events. And the ASCC voted to recommend approval of the site improvements. The third finding relates to the site being well-served by streets of adequate width to carry the quantity and kind of traffic that would be generated by the proposed use. The wine tasting and the events would generate a minor increase in traffic, but the traffic study found that would not be an impact, and the site is well-served by Portola Road. Fourth finding, the proposed use will not adversely affect the abutting properties. And as I indicated, again, the separation that the proposed uses from the adjacent properties, as well, regular tasting visits will be by appointment only, and all parking will be accommodated on-site. Fifth finding, proposed use is reasonably safe or can be made reasonably safe from hazards, stormwater runoff, soil erosion, earthquake, or other geologic hazards. The driveway widening and the improvements will address site safety. The use is proposed to be conducted within the existing agricultural building, which was constructed in 2013 in compliance with the technical requirements, which includes stormwater erosion control as well as geotechnical. Sixth finding, the proposed use will be in harmony with the general plan, purpose, and intent. The general plan seeks to preserve community open space, preserves and agriculture land. On the other hand, the general plan recognizes that privately owned open space has different considerations than publicly owned open space. And it's up to the Planning Commission to decide how to balance these provisions. This finding is discussed in more detail in the staff report, as well as the commission discussed this at its February meeting. The seventh finding is whether or not the use is serves the primary town and its sphere of influence, and that it will meet a need in the town, majority of the clientele will come from the town and its sphere of influence. So if the commission feels that this finding should apply to the proposed use, the commission to discuss if the use meets the need in the town, and then a majority of the clientele would come from the town and its sphere of influence. Then I'll go over the proposed architectural and site development review. Proposed site improvements include new entry signs, driveway and fencing and entrance gate and parking. To start with the signs, the top sign is proposed at the project entrance so that visitors know which driveway to enter. It would be four square feet per side and mounted on a post. The second sign is at the project exit, so as you're leaving the site, and it would warn you that there is a trail and to beware of cyclists and hikers. That would be two square feet mounted on a two-foot tall post. The entrance gate and driveway, all improvements are intended to improve site access and safety, and that includes widening the driveway to accommodate two cars passing by installing new base rock, as well as improving a hammerhead turnaround for anyone that accidentally accesses this driveway, and they can turn around before they get to the gate. The applicant also proposes to lower the dirt berms along the side of the driveway and clear some of the vegetation to improve site visibility along the trail. A new electronic gate with an entry code would be located away from the roadway and trail so that waiting vehicles would not block any hikers, cyclists, or vehicles. The applicant also proposes to relocate the existing fencing within the site, and that includes removing a portion of the fence at the current entrance and relocating it inwards on the site, relocating around the new parking area for access, as well as a portion of the site that would allow it to return to a more natural habitat. There's currently an area for nineteen cars to be able to park on-site, and the project, the applicant proposes to accommodate parking for thirteen additional cars. The applicants propose two optional areas with parking B at the top of the site being the preferred location. This would include some minor grading in an area that was already disturbed by adding new base rock. Excuse me, that didn't turn out well. This is the architectural and site development review findings. Section eighteen point six four of your code provides the criteria and the findings for architectural and site plan review, and that the project's also consistent with the design guidelines. At its October eleventh meeting, the ASCC made the determination that the findings can be made and voted to recommend that the commission approve the architectural site development review. As noted in the site and the staff report, their recommendation was limited to the site improvements, and they did not provide comment on the use permit. The ASCC also recommended that a field review be conducted by an ASCC member of the final placement of the sign, landscape modifications, driveway widening, and the colors and the materials of the electronic gate. The committee also recommended that any landscaping be reviewed by one member of ASCC in conjunction with the conservation committee. Public notice was sent to the one-thousand-foot buffer ten days before the meeting, as well as the town emailed residents and interested parties. The applicant hosted an open house on October eighth as well as October tenth. All public comments received since this project was submitted is included in the packet. And additional comments received since the packet was published have been provided to commissioners and is available on the town's website. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section fifteen three oh three relating to construction or conversion of new small facilities or structures. This determination is supported by the preparation of a categorical assumption memo prepared by MIG and technical studies relating to transportation, noise, and biological resources. These technical studies found that the project would not result in a traffic impact, would be compliant with the town's noise regulations, and would not result in any biological impacts. And that analysis supports the exemption determination. Staff has provided draft terms and conditions for the planning commission's consideration in your packet. If the commission directs staff to return with a resolution for approval, staff will refine more specific terms and conditions based on planning commission feedback for consideration at a future meeting. Staff recommends that the commission consider the application, receive the presentations by the applicant, and receive all public comment and consider any other relevant information. And if the commission is able to make the findings for approval, the commission should direct staff to return with a resolution and terms and conditions for consideration by the commission at a future meeting. And just to clarify, the item is not prepared for approval at your meeting tonight. We would draft a resolution if that's so desired and come back at a future meeting for the commission's consideration. That concludes the staff presentation. Be now happy to try to answer your questions.
All right. Um, I can't see everybody with the presentation up. Commissioners, is here we go, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Go ahead, Judith.
Um, I have some miscellaneous ones. When we talk about the grading and the amount of foliage and things that would be cut back, and we hear, we see it's minor. Is there somewhere in the packet where they characterize what minor means?
We don't have that detailed in the packet, but I believe it's about a hundred cubic yards of grading that would be required at the top of the site for the parking area, and that would require a grading permit.
Okay, and in terms of the trees that might need to be removed around the berm area, I assume minor means no significant trees, can you confirm that there?
Yes, no significant trees, yes.
Okay. In terms of the parking and traffic, were the food trucks taken into consideration?
It was, that would be one vehicle, and there would be adequate space for them to park, yes.
Okay. Is it correct that the six wine club events would not have a staggered timing for ingress and egress, or would those also be staggered? I couldn't quite tell.
They would also be staggered, and it'd be, you know, estimated about thirty persons an hour.
Okay. Those are my immediate ones, thank you.
Thanks, Judith. Other commissioners?
I had a process question, probably for Laura. When we consider CUPs, do, at the same moment, do we consider future reviews of them and what the schedule is to review this CUP?
And that would be an appropriate condition of approval. So if the Planning Commission wanted to add a condition related to future reviews of the CUP, then we would follow that direction and craft something for your consideration.
Okay, thanks.
I have no. Hey Nicholas, your voice is coming through on and off.
Excellent, well, this is my voice saying that I have no questions. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation.
Thank you. John?
I had it's either one or two questions that are related. And we may have discussed this, but I wanted to clarify at our previous meetings. But do we have the dates as to when it was zoned residential versus the kind of the rough date of when this proposed preserve was written into the town plan?
I don't know if we have covered that before. I don't think we'd be able to answer that question this evening, but we could certainly try to answer it for a future meeting.
Okay, I don't know that it's critical, but it occurred to me as I was going through it. And then with respect to those two items, you know, there's been some portrayal of those as potentially at odds with each other in terms of the zone, the actual zoning of the property, and then this proposed preserve. I guess from a legal perspective, Kara, does the designation proposed preserve actually have any legal impact to the, you know, private property rights?
Thank you, yes, Karz Silver, Town Attorney. So the, there is a proposed community open space preserve designation, and the general plan discusses what that general, what that open space preserve is intended to be and how it can be used and and various aspects about it. It, it is not, it's a very subjective standard for you to determine whether the particular project is consistent with that particular discussion in the general plan. The zoning is generally required to be consistent with the general plan designation. And in our view, the two, the general plan designation and all of the verbiage behind it can be reconciled with the zoning. And in fact, you're required to view both general plan and zoning consistently. So that, that is our, that's our view, that the two are consistent with one another, and that if there is any ambiguity, it should be, you should construe them to be consistent with one another.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
No, that was it.
Okay, I only had one quick question for right now. How much of the 229 acres is the meadow area? I know it. Close on order of ten acres, maybe?
Less, I think four point five on the Neely and like two point five on the open space.
So maybe Lucy, do you have an answer offhand?
I believe Neely Spring Ridge is seventeen acres.
Yeah. The total meadow, we think, is twenty, approximately twenty-four acres. And we do, I think we have a map that we could share if that is useful for discussion.
I was just trying to, so just let's call it, you know, so roughly twenty acres, seventeen, twenty-four. I mean, close enough, because, I mean, John, there's hayfield, you know, there's, there was the hay part of it and the winery part of it. So I mean, there's that plus and the winery part of it. So, I mean, there's that plus, I think there's creek and some other stuff. So I was just trying to get kind of order of magnitude. So that's good enough for what I need for now. Any other questions, clarifying questions from the commissioners before we go on to the applicant?
So Craig, I'm not sure whether this is now or in the discussion. There was public comment around the CEQA exemption, you know, analysis, and whether the requirement that there be a nexus to the town benefit, essentially benefiting primarily the town. I don't know if Kara can comment on either of those in terms of, or drill down a little bit more on those two items for context?
So in terms of the CEQA issues, I'm not sure what you mean by nexus to, nexus to the town.
It's the, if, I'm going to have to go back and figure out the page, but it's the requirement that commercial use needs to be primarily serving the town. I'll find it in a minute, but it's something that the staff reports. They have a view that it's not required that we find that, and I'm just looking for the page.
So I think that is in the conditional use permit findings as opposed to the CEQA analysis.
Yeah, these are two questions, two different questions.
Yes, yes. Okay, so in terms, Laura, do you want to answer the CUP finding question?
Yes, let me try to do that. So we have looked at the municipal code and the general plan, and we do not find a direct requirement to apply this finding for this type of use. The municipal code does have places where it is expressly required. So we read that to mean in other cases where it's not expressly required, then the planning commission would not have to make that finding. We did look in the general plan for any express relationship between that finding and the general plan statement. We didn't find it stated explicitly. The planning commission discussed this before and thought about the general nature of the general plan and how you read the different sections together. And so it is a judgment decision, we believe, in the planning commission's discretion to make that interpretation, but it is our interpretation that does not apply. We also looked at the Fogarty records, and they were, they did not expressly make that finding. They sort of dealt with it in a couple of different ways, but never directly making that finding with the Fogarty winery approvals.
Thank you.
And did you get the CEQA answer you were looking for, Judith?
Well, again, I'm just trying to get through the public comments, and some of them are challenging the exemption. So I just wanted more comment around, you have the primary exemption, then you have these backup positions, and I just wanted a little more context on that.
So, yes, and I think that we'll get into this later in the hearing. But basically, the primary exception, exemption that we are relying on is the Class III existing facilities exemption. And we think that the very limited construction work that is occurring as part of the project falls squarely within that exemption. Then there are several exceptions to an exemption that must be outruled in order to confirm that the actual exemption applies. And unfortunately, this language is very complicated. But basically, if an exception to an exemption applies, then it, the exemption is not available. And so that's really the construct that we're dealing with. Some of the commenters have said that some of the exceptions may apply because the property is located next to the earthquake fault, the San Andreas Fault, and they think that that may have an impact on the analysis. We don't think that that is the case. And then there, some other comments are that there are unusual circumstances as to this particular property that would also take this out of the exemption category. And we'll hear more about that in public comment, I'm sure.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, let's move on to the applicant's presentation. So Lucy Kirk, who's up?
I'm up. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners, town staff and volunteers, community members, friends. I feel grateful to have the opportunity and privilege to speak with you tonight. I'd also like to introduce my parents, Kirk Neely and Holly Myers, as well as our legal counsel, Matthew Francois, who you will hear from after me. And I thank everyone here for participating in this conversation to facilitate the best outcome for our community. To the planning commissioners and town staff, I admire your grounding patience, equanimity, and skill in these community processes. And to the planning commissioners, thank you again for volunteering your time and intelligence to support the evolution of our town in alignment with its core values. Our family moved to Portola Valley 40 years ago and to Spring Ridge 25 years ago. We enjoy having the vineyards and an agricultural operation on the land. But at this point, in order to continue growing grapes or making wine at Spring Ridge, we need to be able to have an onsite tasting room. We appreciate the attractive, tranquil, family-friendly community that is Portola Valley, and we want to honor those qualities while creating greater sustainability for our family on this land and generating greater connection and resilience for our community. Maybe I didn't introduce myself properly. My name is Lucy Neely. Sorry if I didn't mention that. Yeah, so change is the nature of life, so we must try and take care to change intelligently, orienting ourselves towards certain goals and values that we would have guide us. Having now experienced this application process, I would say that Portola Valley is well-equipped to consider proposed changes and how they do or don't align with our values. We live in a town with a strong process and protocol, dedicated and generous volunteers, active participation from concerned citizens, and supportive, hard-working staff. We, the applicant, are asking for a change. That is, to be able to host visitors at our site, to be able to conduct onsite sales and wine tasting, and to host what we feel is a necessary amount of events to support a thriving locally-based wine club. I would like to clarify that this is the first time that we have ever asked for this use. There is a strong and persistent false narrative in the conversation in which our opposition insists that we've asked for this use in the past and been denied, and this is simply not true. A robust review of historical meeting minutes shows as much. So we're asking for this change in use now because circumstances have changed over the past 20 years. One circumstance that's changed is that the wholesale wine distribution market is increasingly difficult, particularly for small producers. At the same time, the direct-to-consumer market has grown exponentially, in particular with wine clubs and tasting rooms. These direct-to-consumer opportunities now afford a small winery a much better chance at survival. And the general trend in small-scale and particularly organic agriculture in the past 20 years is for the consumer to have greater contact with the farmer or producer. Farm visits have blossomed in the past 20 years and are now a normal part of small-scale farming operations. This is true for mixed vegetables, and this is true for wineries. Additionally, there have been changes to the landscape in the past 20 years. In that last 20 years, the fuel load has increased tremendously, and our awareness of the risk of wildfires has as well. We need this winery to be financially viable so that we can maintain this property to a high standard and in a way that is in the best interest of the whole town. The resources and costs necessary for vegetation management and other land management are much greater than they were 20 years ago. We held a series of open houses about a month ago. It was great. Over 50 community members attended these informational tours. The general sentiment on the part of visitors, after learning the details of our proposal and experiencing the site, was that this is a reasonable proposal and that the tasting room would be an asset to the town. Some of those individuals who attended the open houses sent public comments describing their experience, and various people, after attending these open houses, remarked that they then had a much better appreciation and understanding of what we're proposing and that their concerns had been allayed. Of course, there was a diversity of perspective. People also relayed their concerns and apprehension to us in these open house tours, which weren't always entirely allayed. Neighbors who lived closer tended to have more concerns, particularly about noise. Though I would say that the parameters laid out in our proposal have generally offered people a greater sense of ease amongst those who feel apprehensive. We had hoped that people's fears about traffic and noise would be put to rest by the studies and reports that were required in the CEQA analysis, and that has been true for some people and not for others. There is one group in particular that maintains strong opposition to our proposal. That group calls themselves POMP or Protect Our Meadow Preserve. POMP is five couples who live on Stone Gate and three more individuals who live elsewhere in town. POMP has a close relationship to the code complaint that some of their members filed against us, alleging that we've operated in violation of the current terms of our conditional use permit and citing emails to our wine club members as evidence. We disagree with their interpretation and would refer you to a letter from our family in the public comments that responds in greater detail. We've been consistently transparent the last three years that we have a wine club that we invite to pick up their wine twice a year. We do not conduct onsite sales. I have personally been responsible for managing our wine club and sales the last three years, and I have done my best to abide by our current conditional use permit. I have consistently and repeatedly turned down literally hundreds of inquiries for tastings and events. I understand that POMP interprets our wine club differently than we do. We maintain that we have comported ourselves well and respectfully and in compliance with our permit. And that's why we're here tonight, to amend the conditional use permit and arrive at a clear and agreed-upon understanding moving forward. We will be sincerely committed to complying with the amended terms of our conditional use permit and are totally open to a review process in order to satisfy people's concerns. We have worked diligently over the last three years to try and meet the needs of our neighbors and community while refining this proposal. And we're grateful to the many individuals who have engaged with us in this conversation in a constructive and positive way. I'd like to note that upwards of 40 public comments came in in support of our proposal since the publication of the staff report. And if you read these public comments, people speak of the beauty of the proposed tasting room site and the property and the asset it would be for the town. We need this tasting room to be able to maintain our family's existence on this land, and we think it will be, we think it will be wonderful to share the beauty of this place with the community. Over half of our wine club has always been Portola Valley residents. It still is, and we anticipate that continuing for the life of the wine club. There is a wonderful synergy between an organically farmed, high-quality local winery and the residents of Portola Valley. Just take a look at the supportive comments that have come in in the past three days. We truly believe we can create a tasting room that is connective, respectful, life-affirming, beloved by locals, and that enhances our town's values rather than diminishing them. We truly believe that our winery and tasting room will be a valuable community member. We're already active in the community, supporting local schools and other community organizations, and we know the community would really enjoy the sense of place and connection with local agriculture that our tasting room would offer. I did mention the upwards of 40 very thoughtful comments in support of our proposal that have come in in the last three days. I also wanted to mention that we specifically did not try to bring a lot of supporters out to this meeting tonight because we knew it would already be really long and feel that the written comments really speak to what our supporters appreciate about our proposal. So thank you for your time and look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Lucy. Matthew, do you have a presentation?
I do, and thank you Chair Taylor. Can you hear me?
I can, great.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Taylor and members of the planning commission. My name is Matt Francois. I'm a land use attorney representing Spring Ridge on this application. I want to thank staff and the town's consultants for their very thorough reports. I know you've received a lot of information, so I want to focus my comments tonight on the proposals conformity with the town's general plan and zoning code. As your town attorney and staff know, and you likewise do as well, a project is consistent with the general plan if it will further the objectives and policies of the plan, and that consistency finding that you make can be overturned only if no reasonable person could have reached the same conclusion. Here, you're not writing on a blank slate. The planning commission previously approved use permits for the winery, the ag building, and the vineyards over the past decades. And improving, in approving the vineyards in 2013, the planning commission found that the use conformed to the proposed meadow preserve designation because it was agricultural in nature and preserved the hay grass field. So this proposal does nothing at all to change or alter the hay grass field. Instead, it involves a minor change in use of an existing agricultural building, which is located on the opposite side of the vineyards from the hay grass field. The proposal would not include any public access to the hay grass field, and I think it's important to keep in mind that the meadow preserve designation is a proposed designation, not an existing designation. And we believe that difference is important. For private properties, like the Neely's property with this proposed designation, the general plan allows private use of a character and intensity no greater than a public use or private use at the lowest residential intensity. So if you consider the trips, and this is all in your staff report, and I, the proposed tasting, sales, and distribution uses would result in far less, far less traffic than the neighboring Windy Hill Preserve or even a low-density residential development, and it's orders of magnitude different. So the, the proposal is entirely consistent with the proposed community preserve designation in light of your past actions and by comparing it to the intensities of alternative uses. It's also consistent with other uses on similarly designated lands. As you know, the Jellic Ranch property is located on a proposed orchard preserve property and involves fruit sales. The Springdown Equestrian Center is located on proposed stable preserve property and includes boarding stables. And of course, the Neely property is located on proposed meadow preserve and includes vineyards. The, in addition to the general plan conformity, the proposal also complies with the town zoning code. A winery is a conditionally permitted use in the RE district. Sales are allowed with a use permit. Wine tasting and distribution are directly related to wine sales and are also permitted as accessory uses. Many other jurisdictions, in fact, every winery that I know in California allows for wine tasting and sales. Many other jurisdictions, including Saratoga and Santa Clara County, allow wine tasting, sales, and events as accessory or conditional uses. As we've pointed out in our prior letters, the town has issued similar approvals for the Thomas Fogarty Winery, allowing it to conduct wine tastings and special events. And the bottom line is that the winery is not economically sustainable long-term at its current wine club membership levels. It needs new members and customers to succeed. Leonard Lehman, the owner and manager of Portola Vineyards in Palo Alto, sent a letter to you back when you were going through your study. sent a letter to you back when you were going through your study sessions on this, citing his lack of a tasting room as, quote, "the single most significant factor limiting our financial viability." He also observed that it's generally accepted in our industry that small wineries cannot sustain themselves by relying on resellers and must develop direct-to-consumer sales as the great majority of the overall sales. That concludes my remarks. I, we thank you sincerely for your continued consideration of the proposal. We respectfully ask the Planning Commission to direct staff to prepare a resolution of approval based on the conditions included in the staff report. And Ms. Neely and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Matthew. So Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? John, go ahead.
Um. I think this is Lucy or Kirk. On one of our previous meetings, there was a discussion about a wine tasting room and its whatever certification requirements. And I believe there was a discussion about how it limits the amount of drinking, say, compared to a wine bar or a restaurant, things like that. I wonder if you, could you just re, give me sort of a brief synopsis of what those were again?
Um, those would be the ABC regulations applicable to tasting rooms. And I honestly would have to familiarize myself with them. I don't yet operate a tasting room. But they are government regulations that guide and limit the service of alcohol with the goal of safety. I'll look them up right now.
Um, I can, I can simply add that I'm familiar with the ABC regulations. I don't know of any limit on pours or any designation for, for differentiating uh, wine tasting from, from a wine bar, but I'm not familiar with the wineage in the ABC. So, well, I, you know, we can consult with our wine attorney, but I think that in this basic BC regulations, there isn't any guidance there.
Yeah. Now, I guess I have a second one. I'm not sure if it's actually for the applicant or, or maybe for Kara. So what we're talking about here is a CUP, and it flows with the land moving forward. But is there any limitation in the future if the Neely's were to sell the property? Does a future buyer have to be limited by that CUP or can they just abandon it?
Um, the, you were correct that conditional use permits do run with the land. And so if a new buyer were to come in, they would be subject to to all of the conditions aimed in the existing conditional use permit. And if they wanted to operate a winery and a wine tasting room, uh, they would have to comply with those conditions. They, if they did not want to operate a winery, they could either develop the property as a permitted use for residential, or they could apply for another conditionally permitted use. Or third, they could actually apply for an entirely different conditional use permit to operate a winery in a different manner. So there would be several options.
Could I go back to, to John and ask you specifically what you were requesting about the ABC regulations? In the staff report on page three, there's the ABC definition of a wine tasting. Um, you can refer to that or I can read it to you if you like. What, what was yours?
Let me, let me clarify my question. So, I mean, one of the public concerns, you know, that I'm sure you're aware of was, you know, were we dealing with a potential degree of drunkenness and things like that? So I was thinking about, well, how does this compare to our restaurants, you know, with the Village Square or the Zots or things like that? And I, I had thought that there was something that related to wine tasting that actually limited the likelihood of drunkenness. And I sort of down the feeling that if we don't have a problem in one place.
I, I don't, I don't think there are any regulations in the ABC regulations about the volume of pours. I mean, a standard pour is a one ounce pour, and you might have four, four tastings, so four ounces. You know, I looked into this issue by looking in Sonoma and Napa at DUI reports and found that there was a survey of three years of data from the Highway Patrol stopping and charging individuals with DUIs. And there was no association whatsoever with wineries and tasting rooms. The reason given voluntarily by the DUI individuals was having had their last drink at home, at a friend's home, at a relative's home, or at a restaurant. There were the four associations with a deal with the last drink before the DUI. So I don't think there are very strong data about wine tasting rooms and sobriety. I think, you know, one, there, there are a number of things that contribute to our, our feeling somewhat relieved about this. First is, you know, this would be a fairly isolated tasting room where people would spend time and they wouldn't be doing serial wine tasting like they do in Sonoma and Napa. And secondly, we would, of course, train staff to look out for inebriation and to limit the number of pours as well, too. So I think things like that can be taken care of practically.
Thank you.
Any other questions, John? Dan?
No. Thanks for the presentations. Those were clear.
Judith?
No, thank you.
Nicholas?
I've, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Um. I was interested in, I, I completely understand this issue about, you know, direct-to-consumer. I guess I was interested in shipping versus onsite. Can you give me some sense of, you know, shipping wine to your wine club members being onsite, I mean, versus tasting? I mean, it sounds like tasting is to sort of get new members, right? Because people show up that presumably aren't part of the wine club. But I was trying to understand a little bit more on the events for the wine club members versus just shipping them their wine. So could you give me a little bit more kind of background behind that?
Sure. Um, we, as well as operating a tasting room, we will plan to ship plenty of wine in a direct-to-consumer way. But the, having people be able to visit a site and try the wines onsite is the most effective way to gain customers by far. Much more effective than someone across the country, you know, hearing about the winery and ordering it online. That, that local connection and that in-person visit is just so much more effective in terms of creating customers and creating community. And then, I mean, our goal is really to have a strong local wine club. And if you look at other wine clubs in the area, various amenities are offered for those wine club members, including pickup parties and various different kinds of events. So we think that the amount of events we're proposing is basically necessary in terms of facilitating the business of the wine club, in terms of having pickups, and in terms of having a wine club that offers the amenities that people want to be a part of it, and also in terms of creating community.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant before we open it up to public comment? All right, so seeing none. I'd like to open it up to public comment. So let's start with Marson. Paloiski, I'm not sure I pronounced your name right. You can correct it when you join us.
Hello, good evening. Good evening. My name is Pavoski.
Excuse me, through the chair, Marson, did you wish to use a nine-minute block of time? Are you one of the speakers that wishes to do that?
Yes, I'm one of the speakers who wishes to do that and join the panel. And we have designated as a donor for my time slots Mari Payne and Richard Ponce de Leon.
Great. And would you like to give a presentation or just speak? Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes, I would like to give a presentation. Okay, let me just share screen.
And give us just a minute to get the timer set to nine minutes for you, please.
Of course.
Oh, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Pavoski. I wanted to start by thanking the commission and the building director for their continued service to our community. Start with Spring Ridge proposes establishing a wine tasting room at the bottom of the valley, far away from the winery buildings. The proposed location is within Meadow Preserve and Portola Road corridor, standing corridor, treasured and protected areas in the center of the town. The applicant's attorney compares the barn to the Fogarty Winery and says this application has to be approved because Fogarty was approved. However, the two are vastly different. The slide shows the number of residences within thousand feet of proposed wine tasting facilities. As we see, barn is surrounded by residences, whereas Fogarty is very remote. Fogarty is a mountainous residential zone, periphery of the town. Neely's barn is in residential zone in the heart of the town. Fogarty is surrounded by seven-acre zoning, whereas barn is in close proximity to one-acre zone. Our general plan recognizes these differences and treats properties on the periphery of the town in a special way. Quote, "In addition to uses serving primarily local residents, public, private, and limited commercial recreational facilities serving a broader area would be appropriate in locations on the periphery of the planning area, but so located as not to encourage traffic through the town," end of quote. Granting this cap amendment would first establish a very new precedent. Commercial activity attracting regional visitors in the center as opposed to periphery of the town in the residential zone. Uh, what is more, uh, important, community responded vastly different to the two proposals. In Fogarty case, we had one household who was against. In Neely's Cup, the community response was very different. We have forty-two households who wrote letters against and twenty-two households who wrote letters in favor. This is based on the agenda that was published on Friday, so I don't have the last couple days. And those forty-two households who were against wrote in total more than seventy-four public comments. On the nearby Stone Gate, Stone Gate Road, eleven households are against, two are in favor, and three did not express opinion. Let us summarize the proposal. The Spring Bridge Cup proposes to add the existing agriculture building to the winery. The proposal allows for boarded fifteen thousand wine tastings a year, three hundred sixty-five days a year operation, some events ending at ten p.m. Do we really expect more than half of the wine tasting, which is eight thousand, will originate from PV residents? Now, uh, the applicant has been already organizing wine events at the bar. On the right side, we see applicants' promotion materials from the May of current year. The applicant has already held wine tasting events at the bar and now post-factum asks to add the agriculture building to the winery. These events included seated flights, food trucks, live music, winery tours. And we have a whole lots of examples when they happen, like three days in May twenty twenty. And this is, this is not an exhaustive list, sorry. Three Mays in May, and even two days just recent, two weeks ago, recently two weeks ago. Uh, these events were uh, at the barn, were also openly advertised on the internet. We see a blog post promoting a tasting menu, live music at the barn from April twenty-four, twenty twenty-one. Now, the interesting thing is the agriculture site plan for the agriculture building states agriculture products will not be retailed onsite without amendment of cup. The applicant and their attorney claim that the word retail in the context of municipal code includes wine tasting, wine events, and wine pickup. If that is the case, we can read the above condition on the agriculture building as wine tasting, wine pickup, wine events are forbidden without amendment of cup. Applicants' promotion materials, on the other hand, invites customers to seated flights at the bar. It also offers pickup at the bar. With all that said, neighbors know about these events also because they had to experience them. In February twenty twenty-one, the applicant had a very loud live music event at the bar. This was reported in the letter to the town from March, and again, reported in the code enforcement letter of Mr. Ward Payne. The code enforcement letter contains links to the recording of the music from three different spots on neighbors' properties. I highly recommend listening to them. Additionally, the findings to support both existing cups state customers may not come to the winery for tasting or purchasing the wine. Despite that, the applicant is inviting customers, in some cases without reservations, to the barn for pickup and wine tours. The applicant also encourages strolling the lower vineyard. On, on the other hand, the noise study for this permit in the sequel report assumes customers will stay on the patio. What is more, each time the applicant asked the customers to use the northern gate and said it will be marked with the two balloons. These are the examples of the directions from different occasions where the applicant encourages using the northern gate. As we see, the balloons are at the northern gate as the applicant described. The existing cups put conditions on the use of the northern gate. Shall only be used for secondary accesses, maintenance of the middle area, emergency access, and the service to the Meadow Area Agriculture Uses Allow For Hurry. And we see those, those balloons notifying members of the public to use the gate. As a side note, the applicant attorney contacted us saying that the applicant believes we obtained these materials illegally. This aggressive tactic is consistent with the dismissive tone of the applicant who says residents' concerns are based on materials, on outdated materials, instead of addressing said concerns. Of course, our materials were legally obtained uh, from Neely Wine Club members who are residents of Portola Valley and Woodston and who oppose the project. Out of courtesy, we also have shown that to applicant's attorney. Now, there are also unanswered questions regarding parking in this project. Uh, the plans submitted with the existing cup limit the location and the size of impervious surfaces around the barn. This is the page thirty-three that I actually referred to previously regarding agricultural, agricultural building uh, from twenty thirteen. And the plan reads, uh, the limit includes three thousand two hundred square feet paving at the building and compacted roads as shown. Thus, the limit includes the access road, which has an area of around four thousand three hundred square feet. It seems all the current calculations omit the fact that the road should be included in the limit. To be specific, the paving in the barn and the road take up roughly seven thousand five hundred square feet out of eight thousand square feet limit. This leaves only five hundred square feet for what is called existing parking for nineteen cars and nineteen hundred square feet patio. Where the existing parking and patio built without permitting above cap limits. These are very important questions as the language of the proposed caps seems to legalize all the existing changes. What is more, Portola Valley Municipal Code says that permits for parking should be submitted at the time of the application for building or for the cup. And we cannot locate any such request or permit for the so-called existing park. In summary, we have seen that the Neely Winery In summary, we have seen that the Neely Winery project is very different in its location, relationship to the community and community response from the Fogarty Winery. Granting this cap will pave the way to further commercial development in the heart of the town, in the residential zone. What is more, the applicant has repeatedly broken many of their existing permits, giving us no hope that they will follow any new, more complex permits. We should deny this cap and enforce the rules of the existing permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marson. All right, next up is Winter King.
And this is another speaker that's pooling time for a nine-minute um time.
Winter, welcome.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Um my name is Winter King. Thank you for allowing us to pool our time. My donors are Sandy Patterson and Taylor Hinshaw, and I also have a PowerPoint presentation, so allow me to share my screen. There we go. Thank you. Um again, my name is Winter King. I'm an attorney with Shoot Mahoney and Weinberger. Uh we represent Protect Our Meadow Preserve, which is an organization of Portola Valley residents with some serious concerns about the Neely Winery proposal that's before you tonight. And I think these concerns can be distilled into three topics. Um the first one, which um Marchan just covered in some detail, is that the town has already prohibited the uses that are proposed um by the applicant in past COPs. And rather than living with those limits on the winery, the applicant has repeatedly violated those conditions and now is basically coming back and asking the planning commission to just strike the limitations entirely. And the project is also inconsistent with the general plan and the zoning code, and there's been insufficient environmental analysis, basically a claim of an exemption. Very much, there we go. Um so the existing COPs, uh it's clear they prohibit the applicant from inviting customers to the winery for tasting or purchase of wine. They also prohibit the use of the driveway at the north end of the property for anything other than secondary access associated with the agricultural use. Yet, um as the previous presentation noted, and um as this slide shows, the applicant has repeatedly held events, invited customers for wine tastings and pickups on numerous dates. They've put out signage on Portola Road, which also violates their existing COPs and have expressly invited customers to use this, um what is supposed to be a secondary access road for these events. Uh and this is a, a post showing that in twenty eighteen, the town basically advised the applicant that um these types of events were inconsistent with the COP, leading the applicant to cancel that particular party, uh but obviously um held numerous additional events down the road. And here is sort of a visual representation from the attachment to the staff report showing that basically uh the applicant is asking the planning commission to simply strike the limitations on use that the planning commission previously imposed with the winery and the ag building. Similarly, striking the limitations on the use of the access road and instead allowing thousands of visitors a year to use that um driveway. This is a particular concern um because residents did indeed file a formal code enforcement complaint back in May, more than five months ago. Um in August, we were informed that staff just lacked the resources to investigate um the code complaint. And yet, here we are with the planning commission considering granting additional privileges and further permits um without this uh vi- um complaint being investigated. And moving ahead with this permit uh would be inconsistent with the town's policy of uh first requiring code violations to be resolved before granting additional permits. This is the municipal code section that basically authorizes um as a method of code enforcement withholding future permits. And in the comment letter we submitted today, we provided information where the town actually utilized this tool um a couple of years ago with respect to a different property owner that needed to remedy code violations before the town would consider additional permits. And in fact, in that staff report, uh it stated that this was town policy not to consider additional permits while a notice of violation was outstanding. Um turning to the inconsistency with the general plan and zoning code, um you know, we've talked about the general provisions in the general plan related to preservation of the Meadow Preserve um and also the um specific provisions in the general plan for Portola Valley that are, in my opinion, quite unique to Portola Valley that really limit commercial uses to those that most frequently, um that serve the most frequently recurring needs of local residents. There's been some discussion in staff report and in comments that those provisions don't apply to this property because it's not specifically designated as a commercial use, it's in a residential zone. Um and as staff indicated, they didn't um find any language in the general plan that they felt required the planning commission to make a finding that the project is consistent with this local serving requirement. But we think that there are numerous policies in the general plan that make it very clear there is a general objective and requirement that all commercial uses, unless they fall into this narrow exception, are required to serve the frequent needs of local residents. And there's just not an evidentiary basis here to assume that um that the increased use at the winery is designed for that purpose. And as Marchan pointed out, the limited exception is for commercial recreational facilities uh that may serve a broader regional area, um provided they're in locations on the periphery of the planning area and don't encourage traffic through town. No one is claiming uh that the Neely Winery fits within this exception. It may be that the Fogarty Winery did, um but the, the project before you does not, um and so is subject to this more general requirement. With respect to zoning, um I've just put on the screen the two relevant provisions from zoning code. Obviously, we've gone over this already, and the conditional use is retail trade of wine produced exclusively on the premises. The point I want to make here is that um uh wine tastings and events are not expressly stated in either as a conditional use or an accessory use. And there were some um uh suggestions in the staff report and comments that if the planning commission denied this expanding use, expanded use to wine tastings and events, that the applicant would have a takings claim against the town. And I just want to say, uh in my opinion, there is no valid takings claim here. The applicant has known uh since they purchased the property that this is a limited, uh that the uses on the property are limited. When they obtained their earlier CUP, they took that CUP with the condition saying that they were not allowed to have onsite customers and wine tastings and events. And so, um it's really, um there is really no argument for a valid takings claim here. Lastly, on Sequoia, you know, I think the main point here is this project involves a major change in use. We're going from purely agricultural to a three hundred and sixty-five day a year commercial enterprise, daily wine tastings and almost monthly larger events. Um and for that reason, none of the exemptions that are cited in the staff report and the other materials apply here. They don't apply when there's um a significant change in use. And um we've also identified in our comments that this change in use could have potentially significant impacts, including noise, hazards, uh traffic safety, and land use conflicts. For that reason, um we would urge the planning commission to simply deny uh the requested COPs. Thank you.
Thank you, Winner. All right, Chris Kohlstad, you're up next. Welcome, Chris.
Hey, thank you. Am I unmuted now?
You are. I can hear you loud.
Okay, um yeah, uh I guess I'm just on audio, not on video, so that, that's fine. So I, I, my name is Chris Kohlstad. Um I am actually a resident of Los Altos. But I ride by Neely Winery uh kind of on a weekly basis. And I came to know Lucy and her family um through my friend, uh Shalini Shakar, who um is actually the winemaker, um became the winemaker at Neely um about four years ago or so was when I, I first, uh first met her. Right off the bat, Lucy showed herself to be very respectful of people's views and opinions um and to be a very warm person. She was clearly, you know, when uh I met her, it was, she was very proud of the crops, um an avid protector and purveyor of the land at Spring Ridge. And you know, she's, has always sought ways to be as environmentally conscious as possible, um you know, shown through her use. In fact, even the previous person had shown pictures of sheep in her vineyards, right? In order to keep, you know, weeds down and, and to uh, to make sure that, uh you know, she kept down the uh, the, the weeds organically. I've been a wine club member for many years now, um basically since, since I first met her and, you know, have been able to, you know, see the vineyards and see where things come from as, you know, Neil does. Lucy had stated earlier, you know, that's one of the, one of the things that people like to do nowadays is kind of see where their food comes from um and see where your wine comes from. And, you know, honestly, you know, hearing the people that are talking that live across the street, um it really sounds a lot, and not to make a pun, but like sour grapes. You know, um beefing up um these numbers to say that they're going to be open three hundred and sixty-five days a year for tastings with the maximum number of occupants and coming up with fifteen thousand tastings is, is pretty ridiculous. You know, I know that the Neely family is very respectful of the neighbors. They have done everything possible to make sure that they are, you know, able to run a business. And I know that that's what Lucy is pleading for, is to help their family stay in the area and stay viable while, you know, having a, having a family business. And it truly is a family business. As you can see, three of them are on the, are on the, the call today. So, you know, it's, it's clear to me that a tasting room would only help to share Lucy with, you know, the, the area and the people of Portola Valley, and they should be happy to have her. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Betsy, Betsy Morgenthau, you're up next.
Thank you. I want to start with my letter of October twenty-ninth, which outlines a Neely reservation proposal affording the owner flexibility to loosen constraints according to their personal experience. Even at this stage, owner intent is difficult to pin down, though in spite of that, staff tries to nail it down anyway. The result is representations that no longer match the intent. What has suffered has been a commonly held understanding of compliance. If we don't learn from experience, compliance problems have the potential to grow significantly worse. Want to move now to a handful of independent points, beginning with the ag building and permit. At the time of permitting, the ag building was noted by Tom Glassick not to be for human habitation. The twenty thirteen permit notes a valuation of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the twenty-four hundred square foot building, and that translates to a hundred dollars a square foot. An engineer should establish that at that construction cost, there's an existence of deep structural peers required of human occupied buildings in the Class A fault zone. Next, financial competitiveness. The applicants have said that the impetus for this request and others before it is due to their business economics. However, the town attorney advised planning commissioners on August of two thousand nine that when approving a cup, they should not consider financial competitiveness or marketing challenges in their decision-making. Fogarty Winery, my biggest learning in reading through many Fogarty Cup amendment requests is that a door once opened to events and tasting begets a steady stream of incremental amendment requests, more hours, change in type, and number of events, change in type of music allowed. To wrap up, I ask you to consider first cause and consequence. Assigning consequences correctly builds trust in a community. Conversely, failing that, you allow the fallout to be borne by the surrounding neighbors instead. Secondly, conditional use permits are discretionary. They're a privilege, not a right. The next step is to address and correct the stream of non-compliance. Finally, this application, should it move forward at any time, please let us maintain the existing cup conditions, meaning eliminate events and tasting entirely from a future cup and allow online purchase and onsite pickup, but only at the winery up the hill, not at the ag building. Thank you all for your kind attention.
Thank you, Betsy. Dave, Dave Cardinal, you're up next.
Thanks. Yeah, are you okay?
Yeah, welcome, Dave.
Right, thanks. Uh first of all, as a meta-comment, the timer is cool. Um I also think if you're going to allow people to amalgamate their time and show PowerPoints, then you should think twice about that because we can get twenty-five people and spend two hours, and I have really good PowerPoints. On the winery, obviously, the Viner Winery is the one halfway up the hill, not the Spring Ridge Winery, so that's not relevant. I also think, um, you know, I didn't know all the town founders, but I was friends with Bill Lane and Gene Lane. And uh they weren't stupid. They saw the way that the West should move on. And I think what we're talking about here is totally within their vision. We're being super hypocritical. We have a huge farmers market every Thursday that draws way more traffic and generates almost no sales tax because almost all the vendors are out of town. And then we have risottis, which does generate a huge amount of sales tax, but way, way more traffic and parking issues and all that. So I, I think the, the winery um opening a tasting room would be great for us. So I'm, I'm all for it, and I don't uh, I don't, I don't see anybody who can oppose it with a straight face and not, you know, have a hypocritical view of it. So I'm now at down to one seventeen, so thank you.
Thank you, David. Joanne, you're up next. Joanne, you might need to unmute. Joanne, are you there? All right, why don't we move on and uh Joanne shows up later and we'll, we'll bring her back in. Dale, you're up next. Excuse me. Welcome, Dale.
Great, can you hear me?
I can, loud and clear.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time, and of course, all of your uh personal time as volunteers. Um a couple of points, I'll try and keep it as short as I can. I'm very much opposed to this. I think this is a commercial enterprise, an area that's zoned agricultural. It's number two, there is no reason that we as the town should be responsible for their financial viability. That's just like me saying, gee, I'm not financially viable, so I need to, you know, open a candle making shop in my house and have people coming all day and night to buy candles. Uh I'm sorry, that, that does not carry any weight whatsoever. I'm going to go back to a comment I put in a letter earlier uh this week. This is a vanity winery gone rogue, friends. Uh they bought the property years ago, they planted wines, they, they made a vineyard, wonderful, more power to them. I'm, I'm very supportive. Wonderful. More power to them. I'm, I'm very supportive of people planting vines and growing wine in town. There are many, I know of at least two. But that does not say that they have to open a wine tasting room and have a retail presence in town. Completely inappropriate. And finally, after hearing the presentation about their blatant disregard for their current CUP, I am, I am aghast, to be quite honest. If any other people in town had done that, I am sure that they would have stopped our project or shut us down in one form or another. And I've got to say, I'm, I'm appalled at the town for not following up on this non-code compliance. I mean, this is part of what we are supposed to do in this town. And I, I stand with others who say you cannot consider this new application until the prior non-compliances are resolved. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dale. Sophie, you're next.
Hi, thank you very much to all of you for listening to us. I've been, I've lived in Portola Valley for over 10 years and first of all, I just want to point out, the first comment that we heard was from Chris Kostad, who doesn't live in Portola Valley. So I think that just goes to show that this isn't going, you know, it's not serving the Portola Valley residents, that one of the people speaking in favor for the, for the project doesn't live in town. So I think we should think about that. Also, I wanted to speak about noise. Noise was a major concern mentioned by the commissioners during the February 5th, 2020 meeting. And the noise study was supposed to analyze noise and, and, and show us what the worst case scenario might look like. But unfortunately, the noise study was based on calculations that were unclear and a bit optimistic. So, for example, some of the assumptions of the noise study was that musicians will play music softly as ambient music facing a specific direction. It's unclear what softly means. And as we've seen, there's issues with enforcement, so you know, other events that have, have been held at, at Neely, the music was not played softly, it was loud. And as pointed out by one of the, in one of the presentations, there are recordings that you can go see and to show that, you know, the, the previous times, the music was not soft. Also, there is no limit on indoor music at open windows in this, in this proposal. And Fogarty Winery has pointed out that only has one neighbor within 1,000 feet in a remote residential area does have restrictions on which windows can be open when music is being played. The study also assumes that customers will remain on the patio and not stroll into the vineyards. But as, as mentioned, the application asks for vineyard tours and we've seen that they've already marketed vineyard tours. So, so again, the study, the assumption to, of the study is too optimistic there. It also assumes that customers will not raise their voices. So again, hard to say, if you've got a large group of people, there's music playing, people are drinking. I think that just the noise of people talking to each other alone can be quite noisy. And then also the study assumes that food trucks will be verified for the generator noise compliance and loading activities will be performed behind the barn. Well, let's be honest, I think that's hard for any business to comply with and to really always keep an eye on what their food truck vendors are doing and whether they're, you know, keeping the generator noise down and, and only unloading in a certain location. So I think, you know, the noise is a major concern. And we've seen at other events that there's been a lot of noise. And unfortunately, the noise study does not allay those concerns because of these assumptions that don't seem realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Laura, you're up next.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
Thank you. During the first planning commission meeting concerning the project in April 2019, commissioners expressed their concern about caps process and asked if there have been any annual review of the caps since 2013. And Planner Cassidy stated that none. The question was followed by the Commissioner Golden remark that commissioners already were asking staff to make reviews occur more commonly. Both caps state that the permit is responsible for the cost of reviews for conformity with the conditions. As such, review of the caps should not be a budgeting issue and should be performed in a timely manner. What is even more worrisome, the proposed amendment to the cap seems to be legalizing all the existing changes to the barn area. Given that we still have important unanswered questions, for example, about parking, we should ensure we investigate this before we can consider approving the cap. Another problem we see is that the current proposal keeps the vast majority of the 360 feet long access road a single lane. This looks good on the paper and limits the changes we are evaluating today. However, inevitably, cars will meet on the single lane and will end up using the middle to pass. We are likely to be considering yet another extension in future because we are minimizing the real impact in the current application. And the third point I would like to make is that, based on the original application and the letter from applicant attorney, it seems that the applicant managed to nearly double the number of wine club members over the last two years. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Kim, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Kim. I live in Portola Valley and I am a member of the wine club. And I want to state that one of the reasons I support the tasting room is the community aspect of bringing neighbors together. I have been to the winery for these times and I think they add a ton to the community. The other reason is interacting with getting closer to our food and understanding agricultural practices that are climate solutions that regenerate the land and that are also solutions for the threat of wildfire that we face. And my experience being a supporter of regenerative agriculture is that Lucy Neely is well-versed and a leader in this field and it's so important that we can be there to interact with the land, to meet the people who are growing the grapes and understand how they are stewarding the land and what that means. Not just at Neely Winery, but what, how Neely Winery stands as an example of the kind of agricultural practices that we need to and that I would like to see into their future, in our future for a more sustainable world. And I also feel that personally, I want to live in an environment where agriculture is not removed from where we live. And I think that the proposal represents a way for community members to interact with and learn from how our drink is grown. And this represents for me the kind of values that I want to see in the town. Thank you.
Ronald, you're up next. Ronald Eastman. Welcome.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to say, you know, this, this is agriculture we're talking about. And it is completely consistent with, with the general plan. When we have horses, we don't have so much agriculture. We have, we have more wineries. And I'm a, a full disclosure, I'm a big fan of wineries and tasting rooms. Okay, but, you know, so Spring Downs has people, they board horses, they have people coming, traffic coming in there to ride their horses. Shall we ban that because it's too much traffic? I mean, the mod, the, the, the proposal is the amount of traffic, it's just so small. And I'm, I'm sorry if some of the neighbors have been disturbed by, by occasional loud noise. You know, some of us don't have the privilege of, of, of living miles from our, our nearest neighbors. And one of you has had to endure the, the noise coming from my house and my children. And I apologize for that again, but you know, it's, it is, you know, it, it doesn't, you know, it is complete, a, a small tasting room. And, and you know, they need to, they need to be able to make a living. They need to be profitable. And as, if they are profitable, they will keep their property up and they will reduce the fire risk that we all face. This is, this makes perfect sense. This is a good use of their land. And they should be permitted to proceed with it. Now, that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ronald. Are there any other public comments? There we go. Will? So I saw Will was on here, but he seems to have disappeared. All right, let me go to Jim. Jim Givens. You can need to unmute, Jim. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. I have one comment for clarification perhaps. Lynn Layman, the owner and operator of Portola Vineyards. I do not believe has a tasting operation. He operates a very successful vineyard. The wines themselves have been recognized in a number of tasting contests, not in his vineyard. So, but I imagine that if this Neely Winery is approved by the powers that be, that you will get the next day a request from Lynn Layman to set up a wine tasting room there. So what's to stop this from promulgating? At least to the Portola Vineyards and beyond. As people realize that, well, some things are okay despite whether they meet the requirements of the CUP or not. So how do you put an end to this? Is this the last tasting room that you would expect to to approve? Or what will you do with Lynn Layman's request when it comes? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I would note for the record that Portola Vineyards is in Palo Alto, so it's actually not in our jurisdiction. But I think your point still will take him, that if somebody else were to have a winery, they might want to open up a tasting room. So we can certainly consider that. All right, Elizabeth, you're next.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
Hi, I am a resident of Portola Valley Ranch and I am in full support of the Neely Winery. I am in support of small family business. I think that the, I think it would bring a tremendous amount to the community. And, you know, the issues that have been outlined, such as loud noise, you know, that, those kinds of things can be addressed and can be controlled. Put an end to music. There are ways to address this kind of, kind of issue. And, you know, decrease the number of visitors, decrease the frequency if there are problems of visits in the future. I mean, I don't believe the proposal was 365 days a year. I don't believe the proposal was all night long. Some of the things that have been brought up as complaints, I would like to see addressed for accuracy and, you know, citing these issues of non-compliance by the Neely family in the, in the past. I would like to hear the, the Neely family be given the opportunity to address those issues. And so I am strongly in favor of this and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Kristy, Kristy Carley, you're up next. Welcome, Kristy.
I will try not to repeat anything that was said. I have a few ideas that how can our town capture the value of the property and, you know, work with them where we also enjoy other things. Like that was an unknown property before I drove back there one day. So I'm just throwing out ideas of trails, recreation, open space, percent of employees who, if you were to make this exception, the percent of employees who would work there would also live in PV. I've heard of some developers, you know, saying 30% of the employees have to be from our town. I'm just throwing out ideas here, trainings that can be given to employees. That is something I wanted to say. How can the planning commission capture our own needs in the town if making these exceptions? And I think those, a list of things needs to be considered. And what are your plans for hiring employees? And how do we go about, you know, really capturing people in town and giving them employment? How many trees will be removed? I'm, I'm a little, you know, minor trees versus major trees. How many trees will be removed? Maybe that can be answered later in this discussion. I always like hearing the planning commissioners discuss, which brings up questions for us and then the public comment and then your vote. I'm just going to throw that out there for an idea. So how can you provide community amenities if PV, if PV gives you exceptions? And I wanted to bring all those up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Leslie, Leslie Cruth, you're up next.
Good evening. I've tried to edit my comments just for you, Chairman Taylor. So I'm a little bit discommodulated, but what I want to say is that the Neelys agreed in 2013 that there would be no tasting room and the same year they applied for a permit to build a barn. And a barn that actually is a tasting room with big windows, a clearer story, patios, parking spaces. And with a sewer system that could accommodate 300 people. Those are the facts. That, that's not, that's in your documents. So I really wonder if the members of the planning commission now feel obligated to approve this project that keeps being described as existing. You know, I hope not. This approach could be quite instructive for all who want to violate the rules in this town in the future. This is not about the Neelys. The Neelys already do what they want without consequences. Why even bother to, you know, apply for a CUP? Nothing will be enforced. It hasn't been enforced in the past and it doesn't look like the staff will be able to enforce it in the future. There's a lot of talk about noise, but not even the, the traffic report didn't even talk about being inebriated. They never mentioned the fact that the driveway is not only across from Stonegate. I don't live in Stonegate. So I'm not one of I don't live in Stonegate, so I'm not one of those families that you're concerned about. But it's, you know, the, it's not far from the entrance to Westridge, where every school day, there will be wine tasting going on when children are being taken home. And middle schoolers can meet up with those inebriated drivers at the corner of Portola and Alpine because those kids walk down to the grocery store. You know, I think you should just grandfather in Fogarty and call it a done deal. The Neelys are not novices in the ag business. They have agricultural concerns in other states. They agreed not to have a tasting room, you know, while they were expanding the winery and asking for the barn. You know, why would they plant more grapes at a loss if there was concern about selling the wine, knowing that they agreed not to put in a tasting room? I have a point about the water, the connection to cow water. You know, as a commercial property in a town heavily impacted by drought. Why don't you require an onsite water treatment system? You know, sprinkler systems are not really used that much. This is really putting a lot of extra demand on a town system. You know, I hope you read my letter. I I know I'm out of time. But I do have lots of questions about how they plan to measure the 50%, you know, of of people that are, they are meeting the frequent needs of the community. You know, I don't understand one of the terms, and I will stop. The sphere of influence, what does that mean? If you have friends from France, are they counted as residents? Anyway, there you go, stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. And and we did get your letter, and I've read it, and it is part of the record, so just. All right, Mary, Mary Hefty, you're up next.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience. I'm speaking not for or against the Neely Winery. Actually, it, just for everybody's information, it is an act of courage to speak either way on on this subject because the Neelys are a beloved member of our community. So I think you should hear everyone's pain as they try and make their comments. That being said, I did at the ASCC mention, and this is very minor. I have nothing really serious to to bring up. But I did say at the ASCC that the signing, the signage should indicate that horses are crossing in front of the, in front of the, on the trail. And I just noticed that, there we go. I just spent another three hours of my life listening to these presentations and realizing that it doesn't matter whether I was there or whether I commented. And it's just not that hard to just add a word on a sign. So I, aside from that, I I have nothing to say. And I just appreciate everybody's patience and grim determination to get this right. And if, just to clarify why it's a concern, Spring Down is being given to the community. There will be more horses coming there across the front of that to the to the open spaces and into Westridge because we hope to be able to maintain the presence of a rural community. And also, just as a historic point of view, it has long been discussed that there be a trail that would go, that would give an access to the open spaces from the town, from the back of the town center. So for, historically speaking, Kristy's comments are of real interest. It obviously seems unlikely in this rather entrenched conversation that we will get that kind of cooperation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Ward, Ward Payne, you're up next.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Ward Payne, I live in Mapachi. I've been here for well over 20 years. I've been interested in the open space of Portola Valley for longer than that. The thing that upset me, I'm against this proposal. I'm against the wine tasting. I object to the fact that this is a commercial business along the beautiful portal, the entry to Portola Valley. This is a commercial business, and it belongs where the founders of this town, the founders of Portola Valley, they put the commercial areas at either end, where Roberts is today and where the restaurant is today. And that's where commercial businesses belong. They do not belong along the center of the town. And this is, this particular facility is objectionable because it is a, it's a tasting room is nothing but an advertising device to bring people to drink wine and to buy wine. It could be, it could be a billboard, but it's just a small sign. Now, there was some comment about what the, what kind of commercial operation should be allowed in Portola Valley. The founders of Portola Valley, you can look this, you can see it. They say that the, all the commercial facilities in the town, which should be located in the two places, those facilities should be designed for the benefit and the regular use of residents. Things like grocery stores, hardware stores, dry cleaning, that kind of thing. Certainly, a tasting room doesn't qualify under that kind of criteria. Now, the the comments about whether the Neelys are conforming to the conditions that were put upon them in the various applications they've made over the past 25 years. Well, they, it's been pointed out clearly, and it's been proven that they have made many mistakes and they have not been cooperative. But what worries me is the things that they are promising now. This town has no capability of monitoring, no capability of enforcing any kind of conditions. It shouldn't be the Planning Department. The Planning Department is not that kind of thing. You, if you want to enforce what you, what they say they're gonna do, you're gonna have to have some sort of police operation because the Neelys are running wild, and they always run wild. And it's not to the benefit of this community to have a tasting room coming down to Portola Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. All right, is there any other public comment?
And Jo, we were trying to get Joanne in earlier, did she have?
I was just gonna ask to see if Joanne, and and there's some more people that are showing up.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So, Joanne, do you happen to be there? All right, I'm not quite sure what's going on with Joanne, but maybe she'll come back eventually. So Dan, Dan Quinn, you're up next.
Okay, hi, my name is Dan Quinn. I'm a Portola Valley resident since 1977. I I did take Lucy up on her invitation and went for a a visit there. And she's got quite a very nice building and amazing amount of work that the family has put in to get permits and this and that and surveys. I mean, I really compliment them. You know, I think, I think on balance, this is probably not, not such a bad thing. But there's one, I do have one concern. There have been a number of serious allegations of violations of past CUPs. And those have been answered or explained or or contradicted. So I presume that that they did exist, they do exist. And I'm wondering, what is the, what is the proposal for enforcement of the conditions on this one? I think this is probably a good thing for Portola Valley. But I look at the past history, and I certainly respect Ward Payne. He's not in this for any personal gain or neighbor or whatever. He's just out of Portola Valley. And he's noticing that there seems to be a bit of a creep here. And I'm wondering, what is the provision for enforcement of this? And also a review process possibly in a year or sometime to see how are things going? Is, are the conditions satisfactory? Is, are things working out? And all that kind of thing. You know, I think it would be as, as presented by by Lucy and the the Neely family. This would be a sort of a nice thing to have. But I'm just sort of a little worried about admission creep here. That's it.
Thank you, Dan.
Enforcement in Mission Creek.
Okay, thank you very much. Wendy, you're up next. Think you need to unmute, Wendy, there you go.
Yeah, this isn't Wendy, this is her husband, Tom.
Oh, hi, Tom.
Hi.
Can you tell us where you live and your last name, if you're willing to?
Yeah, 1100 Westridge Drive. My last name is Hafken Schill. I've been a resident in Portola Valley for 55 years. And I wonder how many of the people who've made negative comments have actually been to any of the tastings at the, at the Neelys. I've been to a couple of them, and I noticed there was no street parking. There was no problem with horses crossing with traffic going in the driveway. They had adequate parking for all of the people who were there. As far as the noise went, I can't imagine that the noise could have even been heard across Portola Road because I could barely hear it right in front of their, their thing. I I was hoping to turn it up so I could hear it better. So, you know, this whole thing seems kind of crazy to me. And I think, well, on the other hand, we could have this wine tasting, which actually has less impact than the Windy Hill Parking Lot or Rosati's or the planned Stanford Wedge project is gonna have. Or we could have the Neelys move out, subdivide this in quarter acre lots, put four houses on a lot, and then see what the impact of that would be. I think, I think the, the thing would be an asset to Portola Valley. I think Lucy has been here, grew up here, respects the rural nature of Portola Valley more than most people. And I I really am fully in favor of it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tom. I I would say for the record that they won't be able to subdivide, you know, into quarter acre lots. They they could potentially build some houses, but it would certainly be much lower density than that. All right. So I see Will, Will Patterson. And then I see Dave, you got your hand back up again. You know, we sort of, you've had your sort of say, I might be willing to, if it's truly something unique and different. But I don't want to turn this into serial set of people coming back on over and over again. So let's start with Will, and then Dave, I'll give you a quick moment, and then we'll go on. Will?
Yes, Craig, can you hear me all right?
I can, welcome.
Wonderful, thank you for your attention. We've lived in Portola Valley for 34 years, and I'm past chair of the Traffic and Bicycle Committee. And I'm intimately familiar with some of the traffic problems in town. Currently, I serve on the Public Works Committee as well. What I'm concerned about primarily is the unsafe driveway entrance to to the project. As has been mentioned but to speakers, by speakers before, it crosses that busy trail used by horses as well as pedestrians. We have very, very heavy bicycle traffic, particularly on weekends. This is one of the most popular recreational bicycle routes in Northern California. Heavy traffic also on on Portola Road. And it's opposite the entrance to the very busy Westridge Drive and also Stonegate Road. And some years ago, we did have a fatal bicycle accident there at the intersection of of Westridge and and Portola Road. Portola Road was designated a scenic corridor some years ago by the town. And we already have problems with the Windy Hill Parking just down the street. And I know the Traffic Committee's been wrestling with that issue for some time. Just to point out, I remember when the Neelys identified that new building that was to be built as a storage, a hay storage barn. However, from what I can see, it was designed and constructed as a wine tasting and event center. I don't think there's any denying that. I think if you approve this application, you're setting a dangerous precedent for future development in areas that have been designated open space. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. So Dave, why don't we bring you on just for a quick moment? Okay, it looks like Dave's disappeared. And it looked like Alex showed up. So I'm getting a little confused about who we're trying to bring up next. Dave's got his hand back up. So can you unmute Dave?
Thanks. Super quick, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, make it super quick.
Okay, super quick. To echo Dan, we have horrible enforcement. Speaking of someone who lives near Zots, they, you know, people park all over Helen God, and we can't do much about it. So I do think that if we want to control parking, we need to, as a town, think about how we enforce that. And that's my, my lead point.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I I see Alex is on the screen, but muted. Alex, did you have comment?
No, I believe that was an accident, my mistake.
Okay, yeah, no worries. I just, I I want to make sure we get all the public comment.
Thank you.
It's useful to us. Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, Ellie, Ellie Ferry. I think you're unmuted, Ellie.
There we go. As you know, I live on Willbrook Drive, and not to echo some of the concerns about traffic, we also have a lot of trouble, even though we have a left turn lane and a right turn lane, getting onto Portola Road with the bicycles and the trucks and the mothers and the kids. So I I just, especially on weekends, it's really bad. The safer solution is to use the current access to the Windy Hill Parking Lot area, which can wind around the Neely property to the former agricultural barn, now winery. This idea has been nixed by the applicant as not being desirable. But if this project is to fly, this would reduce the safety concerns of the northern entrance. Another aspect of concern is the town being asked to approve a commercial operation on a corridor that is designated in our general plan as a meadow preserve on the scenic corridor. Our volunteer committees are supposed to follow the letter of the general plan and not reinterpret or diminish it in any way. I'm also concerned with the town's excuse to not enforce the many code violations of the winery due to a lack of staffing. Now, I believe we no longer have a building inspector, and code violations are farmed out to a code enforcer from outside. Now, if this is true, could this explain why these violations have not been rectified? This project, which aims to turn a genteel hobby winery into a commercial venture, should not be allowed to proceed. I do not think the town has a responsibility to bend the rules to provide a livelihood for the next generation, commendable as it may be, at the expense of the local residents. If the town's going to change the rules to allow such a venture in an area where the general plan specifically forbids any commercial activities, then isn't the correct way for the public to weigh in on whether they feel the general plan should be changed or not? To do otherwise would be to allow a terrible precedent, which would not bode well for our peaceful, well-ordered town. Thanks for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Ellie. All right, is there any other public comment? Still have Joanne hanging out there, but I see Wendy's hands up. Again, we'll open it up, but please make it very brief.
Thank you. I'm just speaking for myself. My husband spoke earlier. I just, I just want to say that I am in favor of the tasting room. I think it's a beautiful setting. You can't even see the barn from the road. Even, you know, and if you did, I mean, it's a it's a beautiful barn. I think they've gone to great, the Neely family, great lengths to address these different issues that people have about noise and traffic and are continuing to want to work with the town to make this be safe and enjoyable. And I think it would be a great asset for our town to have this beautiful winery and agriculture here. It's a part of California wine making and I'd love to see it in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, any other public comment? Joanne, any chance that you've shown up? The phantom Joanne. Okay, so I'm gonna have to start. All right, so Leslie, your hand went up and then it went down. Since I've already called on you and I don't see your hand now, I'm gonna move on. So I'd like to give the applicant up to five minutes to respond. And, you know, feel free to answer questions. You're also obviously welcome to comment on the comments that were made. But let's try to keep it fairly brief. And I opened it up to anyone in the applicant's team that would like to speak.
May I go first? This is Kirk.
Absolutely. Welcome, Kirk.
Thank you. First is that I'd like to guarantee that when we built the barn, that it was not intended as a tasting room. We did not have that in mind at the time. And if we had designed a tasting room, it would have been quite different than the existing building. So that's a canard that the opposition has created for us. The other comment I have is that these code violations are alleged. We don't consider them code violations and we've dealt with them before. Please refer to my letter. And that shouldn't, that is not the major issue here. The question is whether you will allow a sales and taste your room going forward, which is what we're requesting. So that's my only comment for the moment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great.
Lucy, you're mad?
Sure, I have some comments. There was some commentary about driveway safety and I just wanted to mention that the Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee has reviewed our proposal and made some recommendations to enhance driveway safety, all of which we've incorporated into our proposal. And then, you know, I understand people's apprehension about drinking and driving, you know, but I I think the emphasis on that is really disproportionate for our project. And as part of that, I just wanted to remind people that in this somewhat excruciating three year process of this application, one silver lining is that we really have had a great opportunity to refine and refine our proposal. And we feel like our proposal is much better than it used to be for the community. And one of those is that, one of the reasons for that is that the numbers are so much lower and that's really caused us to think about this tasting room experience in a different way. We're by reservation with low numbers. We're going to be focusing on creating a really high quality, tasteful experience. This isn't, we're not on a wine trail. So, yeah, our goal is to maintain the tranquility of the site and to create something that's really sophisticated, that connects people with place and really has like respect and reverence as core values and not sort of like drunken partying. So, you know, one, just to put that out there in terms of what our intention is and like necessity of what we need to create now with the numbers we're working with. But also just that compared to other institutions in town, any focus on us in terms of the risk of drunk driving seems misplaced, honestly.
No, I'll just back clean up here, but just to reiterate, this is an agricultural use, not a commercial use. There was a citation to the findings for a use permit. And your code very specifically says that if a use requires that it be served primarily the town or sphere of influence, then you have to make the finding that the use will do that. There's no such requirement for any, anything in the in the code or the general plan that requires that for a winery. This is sort of a situation where the legislature doesn't hide elephants and mouse holes. It would be very clear if that were a requirement for a winery and it's not and be unusual if it were because a winery, this winery in particular has wine club members that are made up of more than half of of town residents, but also serve people beyond town residents. The reference, the general reference to the general plan, principle 2103 refers to commercial uses being required to serve the the needs of residents. Again, this is not a commercial use. And if you applied that principle to Jellic or Equestrian or the Sundown Equestrian Center, you wouldn't have been able to allow it because it doesn't serve primarily just the town. There's also a claim that there's been insufficient environmental analysis. I strongly disagree with that. In my 25 years of practicing land, land you saw, this is one of the most comprehensive exemption determinations I've ever seen. And and just to reiterate, this determination was prepared by the town's consultant, not by the Neely's. And you have a noise analysis, a traffic analysis and a biological resource analysis. The noise was very comprehensive and concluded no impacts. The hazards confirmed that the ag building was built in accordance with the building code and recognized that the fault was nearby and would be safe for human habitation. And then finally, on the safety, of course, you have other high traffic generating uses, including Windy Hill and the Equestrian Center that are crossing that trail. This this use will not substantially increase those hazards and actually through the signage and the reduce, the reduction of brush and foliage will make it safer to cross that trail in addition to moving the gate further back from the road. So all those are positives from a traffic standpoint and safety standpoint. I'm just finally to this is, this land is not designated open spaces in residential area 11, which does allow for residential uses. So I think that's where staff's concern, potential concern with with a taking came from. And just wanted to clarify that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public input and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. So who would like to start?
I can start, but I usually go first, so I'll defer.
Feel free, break the ice, John.
You want me to break the ice? Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay. So where am I on this? I don't have a particular order here, but it's been some of the the things that have come up along the way. So I believe that it's pretty clear in our code that the winery and retail sales are an approved conditional use in the residential area that it's zoned as. And that that's been a longstanding, I know I wasn't able to get a date. I'm guessing it goes back to the origination of the town. And it was considered, yeah, if this could well be a residential development, but we will allow some things like vineyards and things like that in there also. So I think that's a conditional use. You know, accessory uses aren't particularly well defined. It's left up to our judgment from what I can tell. It certainly seems to me like a tasting room. And, you know, events associated with wine sales would be, if it's, that's not an accessory use, I'm not sure what is. We seem to have a precedent with Fogarty allowing that. But not just Fogarty, it seems like pretty much lots of other jurisdictions based on what I read, seem to indicate that as an expected accessory use. I do think that it very clearly would violate our guidelines if it would turn into an event center or a wine bar as, you know, has been mentioned, you know, this is, we're not starting a bar here. And we not, don't want an event wedding center. Despite the fact that maybe that happened at Fogarty, I don't think in this sense, because it's right in town, that would not apply as a precedent that makes sense. But I do think a tasting room and events associated with the wine club makes sense. I do think it's important to note that I, as which I already mentioned, which is this, this area is zoned residential. And, you know, nothing that we're talking about here, I believe, changes that fact. So there definitely is a real possibility in the future that if, that we could have a subdevelopment here. And so I'm looking at what is better for the town. I have to agree with the various comments that were made, which is we are not responsible for the the business success of the Neely's. You know, we don't have any town guidelines on business development. But at the same time, when I look at it and I say, hmm, would I rather have a residential development here? Or would I rather have a winery? I think winery looks a lot better. And in fact, contrary to some folks, I think that totally supports our general plan. Our general plan, you know, it it sets a tone, which is where we we'd like for this corridor to be a green space, a preserve, what have you. But it doesn't change the fact that it was originally zoned residential and this is an allowed use and was certainly premeditated by the town forefathers as when they set this place up. So when I say what I believe the general plan is telling us is that, given the opportunity, we should do what we can via CUPs or direct purchase of land, what have you, is try to move that forward in terms of protecting that space. I think having a winery there and allowing it as a conditional use permit actually supports the general plan in terms of trying to keep us a rural, a more rural nature moving forward. So I think it's totally in line with what we're trying to accomplish here. What else do I have here? I think when I look, so so one of the things that came up in the comments was people seemed to think there was kind of like a voting going on. You know, how many people were in favor of this process and how many people were against it? This is not a vote. The primary value that I get out of a public comment is what are the concerns that they have? Maybe that I haven't thought about, right? Because you know, they have lots of great input and thoughts. What I heard of the public input was concerns about parking, concerns about drunkenness, concerns about noise and concerns about traffic. I believe that based on the evolution of this process, that the Neely's have addressed the parking. I think the drunkenness is a misnomer. If we were going to have an issue, it would be at these other locations where we have, you know, pretty much the point is to sell a lot of liquor and hard liquor to make your money as a business, as a restaurant or a bar. The point here is, you know, with the point is you're trying to get them to buy your wine separately and it's not, it's not a bar. Traffic, I believe we've had a traffic study that shows, not surprisingly, the numbers are small based on the limits compared to what we already have traffic. You know, if we really wanted to do something about traffic in the town, we'd have to do something like, okay, you can't have housekeepers. You can't have gardeners. You know, you can't have nannies. That would make a big difference. The, but this is, it's pretty small in the total. You know, and things do move. Noise is interesting in that, you know, we have a noise study here, probably the most comprehensive I've seen in my time working on the Planning Commission. And it's still, you know, and we do have, you know, it's one of the areas where we actually do have a town standard for noise and decibels. It's still difficult, you know, to really find it, to really feel good about that. So I think they're meeting all the letter of the law in this case. I wish we had better standards in this area or whatever. It's, it's the standards are hard because it is very a judgmental thing, you know, a personal evaluation thing. However, having said that, if they're meeting the current town standards, I don't think we can hold them to a different standard than we generally apply. Because they're meeting the code. Now, I do think that brings up a couple of the folks mentioned, and it was actually at the top of my list in terms of what would I like the staff to do in terms of moving forward. I do think we want to think about checkpoints. And I believe one of the commentators mentioned that that I had personally said at some previous meeting that we were trying to do that more. Historically, it seemed to me that a lot of the CUPs, they were just done and there was no checkpoint in there. I would like to see, and I believe we have been doing checkpoints in this. And I certainly would like to see something, you know, a year after a full operation by the Neely's, you know, presumably through next year, if it all go, if it goes through, that we do a, okay, how did it go? Are we really meeting the parking goals? You know, what's happening from a noise perspective and the complaints and and how valid are they? I think that would make a lot of sense. I believe the Neely's are trying to do the right thing in terms of responding to theirs. But I also think the neighbors are rightly concerned. So I want to deal with both of those elements in terms of moving forward. There was a number of complaints about change over time. And I have to say, I think change happens. You know, personally, I've done four remodels for my house. We moved here in 1986. I didn't know they were coming and I didn't try to game the system in terms of what was I going to get where at what time. But things change. And I suppose it's possible that Kirk had some master plan in mind, you know, nefarious master plan in plot in mind. But I kind of doubt it. And even if he did, you know, we have to look at where we are and what's going forward. And does this seem to be okay? In terms of where we are. And I believe those are all my comments at the moment.
Thank you, John. Nicholas, you want to go next? Since I can't see you?
Yeah, here I am. So John was pretty comprehensive and I'm not going to take up a lot of time repeating his thoughtful comments. I did have a couple of additional questions, little bit of of concern.
Nicholas, we've lost you.
We heard your first few sentences.
But you're, I'm now lost.
Now you're back.
I'm back.
Excellent.
Thank you. Yeah, so I I've always been a little troubled by a, an ordinance or provision that discriminates on the basis of where a person is from. And on a couple of, on a couple of different levels. And on on a couple of on a couple of different levels. One is, there's a whole. Line of cases and I'm sure our our town attorney can. Can can take us through them. If. If, you know, as she sees fit. These are the. Milk cases and the garbage cases in the for what it's worth. The garbage case is more recently than milk case is older. But I think at another level. It's also a, we're a special place. And. I'm not sure that we want to wall ourselves off. Really necessarily, and the question would be not whether. We want to, what what is the nature of the exclusivity? That we would be trying to achieve. By establishing. A limitation. On. On the. Judgment of who who is using the the facility. I think that is challenging more so. When you get to actually establishing what is the nature? Of that exclusivity. So for example, are we going to be measuring? How many cases are purchased? What is the revenue that's purchased? How many people? Arrive? And what are the other values that might be gained? For example, what is the value of the enterprise as a whole? If we think of it in the context of fire? If we think of it? In the context of open space, if we think of it? In the context of helping to remind us that wine doesn't come from a bottle, but it comes from a plant in the ground. Those are. Benefits that are reaped. Intrinsicly locally, I believe. Somebody passing by may also. From out of town. Might gain a benefit as well, but I'm not sure that I see that necessarily as a. As a as a problem. So with respect to. Who is using? From a legal standpoint, I think that the whole thing's kind of questionable from a. A policy standpoint, I think that the. Issue is at least open. And from a, how do you figure what is your metric? I'm at a complete loss unless somebody can. Explain that to me. I think that there are a handful of other issues. That were brought up and of course, the issue. Of drinking. And driving is is always always an issue, but I I would suspect that. Probably the biker bar at the top of the mountain. And the beer garden at the other side of town. I'm reminded that David Starr Jordan. Called it the rottenest place. In and a disgrace of. Of San Martin County is actually our beloved risottis. I I'm not sure that. The same amount of libations will be consumed. At a a wine tasting room as would be. Perhaps in somebody's living room, much less. At a beer garden, but that may be. Open. The question of noise and the question of safety. Are issues that I I do, I do, I am really attentive to. And with requests, with respect to the question of noise. We do have an objective standard, noise is a challenging. Issue. Because of its temporal nature. As well as some subjective aspects. Of noise, the FAA has had a very challenged. Time in figuring out what noises and for those of us who were working. On the. Airplane flyover issue, you'll remember the challenges that we had. With that, but there is an objective standard. And one of the. Aspects that. Commissioner Golden called out is the use of check-ins and we have used check-ins before. And one case in which we used them. Was over recently. Was. At the former Al's Nursery. At Windmill. Where there was a, I believe, a one-year check-in and. Our. Planning director may have the the points at at her hand, but there's a one-year check-in and they believe there are subsequent check-ins as well. We also have check-ins. With the. Under the CUP for the priory. Who visits with us and we. On a annual basis, most of the time. Will go and review. What their enrollment is and how the facility is being used. And what the issues are. At. At the at the priory for issues of compliance. I believe we also had a specific noise related issue. For spring down. In which we had a check-in period as well. And while I'm confident that. The Neelies. Might want to have more permanence and not have a check-in where things can change and. Standards can be tightened as as necessary. It's something that during the discussion. I think it is worth worth reviewing. As a group. I was heartened to hear. That the Traffic and Safety Committee took a look at. At the roadway issue. And that Lucy reports out that in fact. She adopted the. The. Winery and the application has been modified to. Address their concerns. I think that that of course should be. Verified. And in the intervening time between now and when a resolution comes back. The Traffic and Safety Committee. Should appropriately. Be. Be consulted. So. The the issues that I I see here are really one of. Noise and safety. I'm less sympathetic. To the notion of who and how much is being purchased and what the benefits are. And who's enjoying them? Whether the local or not. I think that the opportunity to have check-ins is a good one. And. I just only note that. Generally in a residential area, if one. Has a agricultural use, if one has a little orchard in one's backyard or even a large orchard in one's backyard. You get to sell your apples. And I think that's highly consistent with. What the general plan speaks to for Tola Valley and that is a place of. Rural atmosphere and that includes. Ag and cruising. For the culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Anne, you want to go next?
Sure. Thanks, everyone, and thanks for all the comments. So it's good to talk to. My friends and neighbors. I too find that the tasting room, well, of course, a winery, but also a tasting room fits into the residential zoning. Under a conditional use permit and the tasting. Is part of an accessory use and the events now that they've been limited to the wine club, it is an accessory use. Also that it fits into the general plan. I mean, the piece of land is just so beautiful. I think a lot of people have this feeling. I didn't realize it was there until it came before the planning commission a few years ago. And then drove back there, but you know, one way to. Respect and have other people love the land is have them use it, right? And as other people have said. You know, windy hill or a hiking trail. It's a nice way for people to enjoy nature, but it's not without impact, right? There's. Gobs of people and dogs. I think this is consistent with a natural, beautiful place, a kind of use for it. I always had three really big issues. Parking, I think a lot of people feel this way, but I do not want one more car parked on. Portola Road. I'm really pleased that they've done the appointment only. I think that cuts down on people just stopping by and parking on the road and seeing what's happening. I like that there's more parking now. This is a change from earlier plans and I think the attendant is good. I think you might only need that at the beginning once people figure out where they're supposed to park since they're repeat. You know, customers kind of, they'll they'll figure that out. Second was always safety. I like the changes now that. The little section that's two ways on the driveway. I think that's great. So people don't just. Turn in and maybe need an outgoing car. And the clearing that I saw a few weeks ago, I guess that was the woodside fire protection department that they've done all around town. Looks much better, so I feel much safer if I were up. Riding my bike by the driveway now. Noise was the third big issue. And I think the the plan for the. You know, not big, open events is great and the noise study I trust. And I'm just feel certain that nobody's going to hear the regular tasting. Business. I mean, it's next to Portola Road, so it's hard to, there's an ambient noise there. And then there's only four events, right? I think one of the speakers said, and I definitely agree with. I do not think the standard should be each of us never hear our neighbors, right? The nature of a neighborhood is, well, no, you do hear them, so. But this is only a few events and I don't think the noise is going to be objectionable. On the CUP, actually, let me talk about the. Alleged violations of them. There's one topic I heard a lot from. My fellow residents about that the. There they were not supposed to ever have tasting or it was maybe a quid pro quo for no tasting. I studied that. It's been a few years now, but I real, I was not on the planning commission back then, but really looked over it. And there was no discussion about. Whether tasting could be there or not. I feel I agree with Lucy that that was never a request. In my mind, the reason it was put in there is because the word winery. Usually often means a tasting room, right? If your friend said she was going to Napa to winery, you'd think. To taste wine, not to go walk in vineyards. Is what you'd think. So in order to be clear at this previous CUP. When they're, the planning commission is going to approve a winery. They wanted to be clear, we mean. The place where you grow grapes, that's what you're allowed and they wanted to just clarify. And we don't mean the other use of the word, which is tasting. Because it wasn't talked about, so. Just to say why I'm not judging that as a violation to my neighbors. And then I have no problem with people coming and having a new plan and asking for it. I do like the idea of reviews on our, if we approve a CUP to have a review for it. I like the idea of, you know, one year from now and then say every five years have a comprehensive review. And then my last topic, I just want to tell my. Neighbors that part of part of my decision-making process. I've been on the planning commission for several years now and we see projects. I always view them now as their rights for the land. And it really doesn't matter to me. I don't take much influence by the. Current owners. So we heard a lot of comments about how great the Neelies are and how long-term residents and respect for the land. We heard other. People say, no, they didn't like the family. They thought they'd been violating terms. Maybe those balance out, but neither one matters to me. We sometimes have people ask for variances on their land and say, oh, it's I'm building my dream house. I have to do X. And then sell the house when they finish. For me, the decisions are always. This goes with the land. How do I think about this decision if, you know, Gallo came and bought it? How would I feel about it then? So that's the kind of things in my mind. I'm not, I'm not going to rely on any particular owner. And their promises or not promises. Is this something that I as a resident would be happy to live with for? Possibly a very long time in a. You know, town in a place that's very special. That's all for me.
Great. Thank you, Anne. Judith?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who's joining from the public and thanks to the Neelies for their. Their presentation and their preparation. And their patience through a long process. It's been a long process for a good, a good reason in that you have a beautiful piece of land in a really important part of town. And you know, as I've seen the this process, not the one from twenty thirteen move forward. I've seen. A whittling down of of ideas to a core of activities. That I think are. Pretty tightly connected to. A winery. And incidental tasting. So I appreciate this process for having arrived at. A closer balance to where it needs to be. And. You know, my fellow commissioners have been very articulate about a lot of the the thoughts. I don't want to repeat all of that, but what I will say is. A little bit along the lines of what Anne said, but a slightly different spin on it. If this property were to transfer. What would I worry about? And. And because it's in a very special place and is. Spectacularly beautiful. And you know, have neighbors that are close by. I would worry. About the noise and I struggle with this, to be honest, because. Is it okay? On the one hand. I don't want to discriminate against people if we have a townwide ordinance. However. You're getting a hundred and forty-four people coming in on certain event days. And. I maybe there's not a decimal level. But I personally think it's worth. Considering some parameters around. Closing the windows if it's indoor music, if that's, you know, environmentally feasible, like it's not a hundred degrees. Such as right now, if I read it correctly. And there's a lot of reading to do. That there could be outdoor music that's not amplified. That's great. But there could be a hundred, you know, you can invite the symphony down and that would be outdoor unamplified music that adds up to be pretty loud. The only protection there is the the decimal level. Task. So I I struggle with whether that's. The right thing to do. If there's anything that we can do from implementation standpoint. To ensure that. That the outdoor music is. In a certain vicinity, I would. Be open to considering that to make this more livable for the neighbors and and for the Neelies because it's a nice. Idea to have that. In terms of. A couple of implementation oriented things, if this does go through. I personally think it's really important that the equestrian community be consulted and be referenced in that sign. That's an important corridor. Right next to an equestrian center. And there's no way that that sign should not warn that there is. Crossing equestrian traffic. I've seen horses slip and fall. I've seen, you know. So the berm renovations actually need to be considered in light of passing. Equestrian traffic. So my suggestion would be to get input on the sign placement. So that you're not. Putting it in a place where it's going to force the horses to go out. Or that it's least intrusive. That it references the equestrians and that. Someone who rides be consulted when you're looking at the. The berm reconfiguration, which makes sense from a safety standpoint. I like all of those proposals. But let's make sure that we hear that voice from that community. To before this, you know, if this does go forward, gets finalized. I also have a little bit of concern about the concept of a food truck. For some of the reasons that people said, I I think it makes sense if it's one. It might make sense if it's a few. It doesn't make sense in terms of, you know. Over the the ambiance we're trying to achieve if it's many, many. So I frankly, I have to think about whether there is something around that that. Should be. Referenced. I do have concerns about enforcement. I'd like to hear what the town would envision as the solution. So there's two pieces of that. One is the. So there's two pieces of that. One is the checkpoints and I support those. I know they're they can be tricky to implement and what does it mean if they're not being? If you don't get a good result. So I'm kind of curious what the town would tell us. As to enforcement and the checkpoint, there's got to be a balance there. One is self policing and checking in. The other is. Enforcing if there's a parking problem, enforcing if you see somebody driving when they shouldn't. It it's going to be tricky. And then I know the Neelies will have an attendant. Hopefully that will will help, but I I don't think that's. One of the above. I think it's got to be some combination. In terms of the events. Again, because I want to make sure that. If the CUP mentions a permitted event. What is that? You know, I know that they are picking up the wine. That makes sense, but in the potential language. Could it be any event or could it be business, you know? Winery related events, agricultural related events. I think there might need to be some tightening up of that. In in any language that. You know, is is on point for what the goal is and doesn't open up. You know, all kinds of really large events. And in terms of. The special release events going to 9:30 at night. If that were to happen in the evening, I can see that being a slightly different safety issue for the parking. Sorry, the ingress and egress. On those. If it's in the summer, maybe it doesn't matter. But. You know, if there's no extra lighting. What do we think about the 9:30 PM? But I I think on balance overall, there's been some good focused effort to pick what. Seems to make sense for this particular project by the Neelies. I I like to see that. I do think that the enforcement and safety issues. And compliance are what's going to keep me focused in the next step. I'll stop there. Craig.
Thank you, Peter. All right. So I'll add my comments. First of all, I just wanted to thank the public for all their comments, the applicants for their presentation and my fellow commissioners. So I think I come at this a little bit differently. I I've heard a number of. Concerns that were raised that before I am willing to sort of vote for this, I'd like to. Get a little bit deeper. These alleged violations of the CUP, maybe there's something there, maybe it's not. But. I it it just it didn't sit well with me that we don't have a good answer other than we're too busy to follow up. That that just feels wrong to me. There was an issue, I think it was on impervious square footage, but it was a little bit hard to tell. One of the presenters had a calculation. I'd just like to know if there's anything to that calculation. There may be, there may not be. And then finally, I haven't heard much from mid pen. We got a letter from them. In the very beginning, and I never heard whether those issues were resolved and where they stand on the current proposal. So. I'd like to see those concerns addressed before we move forward. Overall, what I'm struggling with here is, you know, when I think about the towns. Sort of founding principles in the scenic corridor. I mean, this is a special place and this this project feels like it has. Too much impact for the benefit to the town. Or to put it another way, I think that the damage done by this level of activity. Could be pretty great to the sort of founding values that we hold dear. So if we're going to go forward with this, I I would like to see this. Pretty drastically reduced. I think the number of events need to be reduced. I think the hours, particularly the evening hours, because if if I live near it, I mean, noise. In a mountainous community, I mean, it travels everywhere. I'm always amazed. But I can hear at my house, it's obviously coming from miles away. So I think trying to reduce the evening hours, because I think those are the most sensitive, you know, when you're at home and it's dark. And then you're listening to music coming through your windows. So I'd like to see that stuff sort of pulled back. I'd also like us to consider. Not necessarily a review process, but more what I'd like to think of as a ramping up process. That we start a little bit smaller, that we reduce the number of events, we reduce the number of days of tasting. And we run it for six months. And if that goes well, then we expand it. And if that goes well, then maybe you expand it. Rather than starting with this full blown thing and then having to enforce our way back to. Getting the right behavior. So. I think for me, I'm I'm very sympathetic with this sort of, you know, direct to consumer. But I think a lot of that, I think you could ship or you could find another location to meet people to give them their wine. In terms of the tasting, I get it. I get that having some amount of tasting so that you can get new wine club members. And it makes sense to me. I think having a community day where people can appreciate. Nature and Lucy, I think a lot of the stuff that you've put together, I see that has a lot of value as well. So I guess for me, the proposal as it stands just seems like too much impact and I. Like, as we sort of work through this discussion to figure out how. We could start smaller and then potentially work our way up. And I think that would also give the neighbors an opportunity. To find out how this impacted them as well. So I think that's basically what I have. Let me just check here. I mean, there's so much that was said. There's some small things like the food trucks. I'm with you, Judith. The idea that a food truck would take one parking place. I mean, I've never been to any place with food trucks that they don't park across like five parking places. So. I mean, I think we'd have to manage that, but but that's, you know, that's way down the list in my, I mean, I I'm sure that we can do that. And I think that that's something where I trust that. The Neelies are trying to do the right thing here. And and I think if we went and said, look, I mean, these food trucks are crazy. That that would be easy to fix. So I I don't worry too much about that aspect of it. But I do worry about the total impact. That that's actually. As I look at this project right now, and particularly being on the scenic corridor, it just it seems like too much to start with. So I think those are my thoughts.
And through the chair. There did seem to be a number of questions related to noise. And we do have the noise consultant here this evening, Chris Dugan. So I didn't know if we wanted to ask any specific questions. Or if anyone was interested in the assumptions, maybe related to music or some of those other specifics while we have them available this evening.
I'll leave that to the other commissioners. You know, again, I think my personal view on it is. I'd rather see how it goes and get, I mean, because the neighbors are going to know what impacts their house. And noise studies, I think, are hard and and Chris can probably confirm that. They're they're not an easy thing to put together and you make your best assumptions, but even then, I mean, I remember when. The Graham Presents Center would blast South Palo Alto and who would have guessed something in Mountain View would have an impact on Palo Alto? You know, so that I I think that's just really hard to know until you actually get into the detail.
So Craig, I would actually, I would like to hear from Chris. And not that I don't disagree with you. I mean, noise is really hard. And it's, we do have an objective standard in the town. And if folks are meeting it, I don't see any reason that we can deny. Their request. On the other hand, I'm actually really interested in on, you know, are there better ways? To deal with this and I'm maybe somebody who knows about sound can tell us about that. So that's why I'd love to hear.
Chris, you're on.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Chair Taylor and members of the planning commission. I do have a short. Presentation that I could give. Kind of weighing if it's worthwhile to do that or if I just try to. Maybe make this a little more succinct. You'll allow me a moment. I will just share my screen.
Sure. And John, if you have particular questions that you'd like Chris to answer. I mean, I think feel free to help give you give some direction on where to go.
Yeah. So so the problem, of course, is we do have an objective standard and yet, you know, I live. Next to. The priory. And we do get some noise, you know, and they have football games and things like that. And it's like. You know, I bought the house knowing that that's where I live. And I actually kind of enjoy it as part of being part of the community occasionally. And the problem, of course, is does occasionally become too much at some point. So. You know, the decibel standard just. Doesn't seem great when it comes to all the comments I hear about noise. So. If he has any thoughts about other standards, and I don't think we're going to change them here, but other standards that we might think about moving forward, that would be wonderful.
Certainly. So I have shared my screen with a couple of points, but I'll start jumping right in to answer your questions. And for the record, my name is Chris Dugan. I'm with MIG. Consultant to the town and the preparer of the noise impact report. It's actually my second project, a second noise impact report in Portola Valley. So I certainly appreciate the sensitivity. Of the noise issue and the comments that have come in. A part of the challenge the town faces is that you have a very quiet environment. I appreciate the comments about the comprehensiveness of the noise report. We did try to disclose as much as we could about what potential noise sources are of this project. What the ranges in the sound levels for those sources would be. And then ultimately what the effects of the of the noise levels are. It was said pretty pretty well earlier when. We talk about an objective standard that the town has in terms of its 45 dBA. Noise level standard, but then also the subjective nature of how any individual perceives a certain noise level. A few points I want to highlight, just to put them on the record. Is, you know, our noise report does evaluate all potential noise sources. Construction, of course, the non amplified music. Generators potentially associated with a food truck, human conversation. And from a conservative standpoint, we pretty much assume that all of those noise levels, all those activities could be occurring at the same time. Obviously, construction would occur first, but then all rational noise sources could be occurring at the same time. We do evaluate what's proposed right now as part of this CUP amendment. And we do conclude that the noise levels would not exceed town standards. So from the objective evaluation of sound pressure. And what the decibel level would be at property lines. Our report's finding that we don't exceed 45 decibels. I think it's important to caveat that we make that conclusion. Based on the incorporation of some specific best management practices about. Purpose of the ambient, the purpose of the non amplified music. Where musicians could potentially set up, which way they have to face when they're playing their instruments, then how loud they should be playing. Those instruments. I think. You know, we're clear in the noise report that even though we're objectively meeting the town standard, we're also clear that the noise levels will be. It's a quiet ambient environment. When we were out there conducting our ambient noise monitoring. We heard bikers having conversations as they were coming up Portola Road. So we can't guarantee that the project will not be audible. At adjacent residences. But we're fairly confident with our methodology. You know, we're going to meet that objective standard. I will say there's been some question about. Or. Some hesitancy about applying a numeric decimal standard. It really is still one of the best ways to evaluate. A potential impact to a receptor. And the 45 dBA standard that the town has is. One of the lowest standards I've come across. There are municipalities that establish 45 decibels as an interior noise standard. By way of comparison during the nighttime. And here we're trying to meet a 45 decibel standard during the daytime. So I think that's an important point for the commissioners to to have an important perspective.
So Chris, do we have a nighttime standard that's different than the daytime standard?
Yes, the nighttime standard does lower. However, this proposal, because activities would conclude by 9:30 and essentially the site would be. Participants would leave the site by 10:00 PM. The nighttime standard does not apply to this project. Town's code defines daytime. Daytime standard applies from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And then, you know, you said that there were some. Ways that when you sort of analyze, say, music that you assume. The musicians were faced a particular way playing a particular. I mean, is there some way that. We could get that information that we could incorporate that so that, you know, it was clear, you know, kind of what those constraints are. So that we could sort of meet the sort of total package that you're proposing.
Yeah, in my opinion, that should already be worked into these conditions. The noise report outlines the best management practices. It's clear on. You know, the type of music that's to be played. We're talking about background and ambiance only. We're not talking about a concert or a symphony. As was kind of alluded to before, we're talking about solo, duo, possibly a trio, some sort of small ensemble. They have a very specific place that they're to set up their instruments. They have a very specific direction. That they're to face when they play their instruments. And there was a comment made about we have a. Sort of a qualitative requirement to play music softly. And I understand that. And it is very difficult to say what is softly 75 decibels at three feet softly is 80 decibels at five feet softly. What we I can say is, I think if you tell an accomplished musician that they have to play an Isimo. They know what that means and they won't be out there thinking if they're doing bricks or out there to play a rock concert. They will play their musicians, play their instruments softly.
I believe Laura. We just got a. Something that we would include in our. Proposal. Moving forward about. The music and its location adhering to the. Parameters associated with the sound study. Moving forward. And. Yes. If you're looking, I believe you're looking for input as to what we want to include moving forward. In my mind, that would be one of the items. Judith, sorry, I interrupted you.
It's a variation on what you were getting at, which is. In implementing any such. Parameters. How much has to go into the conditions expressly versus? A referral to a study because I think. It's going to be more meaningful if there are specific parameters. In the conditions. And then maybe the rest of it's helped dealt with later, but I don't know, Cara, I guess it's for you or Laura. How you would do that? Like, how should we be thinking of? Using what the noise study did. But making it something that has teeth.
I think it would be very appropriate to have conditions with specific requirements. That could be descriptive that talk about where musicians would stand and what conditions and what direction they would point. Because then it would be much easier for them to implement and for it to be monitored.
And so Laura, does the report? From Chris provide that data information for you?
Yes, the information's in the report and it's also in the assumptions that go into his formation of the report. So if the planning commission wished us to, we could draft detailed specific conditions with Chris's assistance to make sure that the assumptions are correct. And that could be a starting point for your consideration.
I would wish that.
And I I'll just also add that a lot of those assumptions are actually already built into the project description, but as we. Move towards drafting particular conditions of approval, we can also include. Include those factors into the conditions of approval as well.
Yeah, I mean, just to comment, Craig, if I could, on the noise. I do think there's an argument for having some special parameters. In that nice, quiet meadow area. If, you know, I'm next door to somebody and I've lived with that. Kind of coming and going, I'm immune to it. But when people go down to the town center, they're looking for a little more peace and quiet. So I. I do personally think if we could do something more than just the general. Standards and decibel levels and be more thoughtful about it within the. standards and decibel levels and be more thoughtful about it within the, you know, imperfect information um that we we might have, uh, that would be helpful, I think, to the community and the enjoyment of that space.
You know, what's interesting, um, Judith, on that is I was, you know, early on, there was the discussion about where is the the proposed preserve? Um, and it was kind of interesting. So I read that. So the four point five acres I came up with is actually the uh, area on uh, the meadow uh hayfield area of the Neely property.
Right.
That uh a previous planning commission uh indicated, oh, well, if if they preserve that, then it meets well, any possible requirement for uh the town in terms of um this, whatever our our um town planning, green acreage uh uh area.
The Meadow.
The Meadow Preserve, yes, yes, yes. Well, the Meadow Preserve is actually larger, as you pointed out, Craig, uh, in terms of, I think it's twenty four acres of which, as you were right, seventeen is uh Neely and uh the other acreage is on uh the open space M R O C. Uh, what's interesting is that the hayfield, the the areas that are closest are the four point five acres of the Neely property, the hay area, and the other two point five acres I was thinking about is actually the parking lot for um the open space preserve. So if I were to compare the two, I actually think that Neely space is kind of nicer than the parking lot um when all is said and done. Um, but it also goes back to Judith's point, which is the rest of it is kind of up the hill. And it's further away from um you know, the areas that we're talking about from a sound perspective. I don't think there's a lot up there when all is said and done to be bothered by the sound when you know, because it's above the 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 main road. So.
Not sure I followed that last part, John. Are you suggesting that the people who live on the other side of Portola Road aren't uphill from this area?
No, what I was pointing out was that if we were talking about trying to preserve uh lower decimal noises in the preserve area, actually, the preserve area, most of it is further away from the spots that we're thinking about.
And go ahead.
I have a question for Chris while we have you. So we have this objective standard and it's interesting that you tell me our number is lower than almost any other community. That's great. But how closely, in your opinion, does an objective standard really measure what people care about? Uh, Craig pointed out that you can have these quirks, right, where there's hills or rocks or something. I live across a canyon and, you know, people sound like they're right in my yard. Um, or I think water does that too. Or then the opposite, which is if you have trees and a berm, you know, maybe much louder even uh, most neighbors couldn't hear. Does it, you know, does this objective standard, is it a pretty good way to capture what what's really going to bug people?
An objective standard allows you to evaluate just uh just how loud something is. I don't like to use the word loud, but just how is in an objective manner. It will tell you anything about how the individual hearing that noise is going to react. It will put the sound pressure in context, and you can use that information to compare it to other known noise sources. Is this twice as loud as a passing truck? Is this half as loud as a passing truck? That bit of information, unfortunately, in terms of an individual's perception of the way something sounds, um, forty five decibels may mean nothing.
Thanks. Do you capture sound um that's sort of headed uphill? Like, because I know a lot of these things are at the property line, but I mean, at a property line is presumably at like three feet or something, whereas if you live up on a ridge looking down on this, would you capture that in the sound study? Or is that not really something we we analyze?
You could, you you can do that. For the purposes of this study, we applied, we evaluated standards at the property line uh for the town's municipal code. And then as we go further up and into a property, in theoretically, noise levels would attenuate more with greater distance, and particularly in the area around this property, it's soft ground cover. So we would expect sound levels to be a little bit lower. Now, there's wind conditions, there's other environmental factors that can change a prediction on any given night of the year. But in general, the presumption would be as you go further away, more into the interior of a property, your noise prediction would decrease.
Thank you. Other questions for Chris?
Not for Chris, I have other comments, though.
Hold on, I've got one for Chris. I'm sorry, as I have speaking to mute. Uh, you'd think. Yeah, so I think that it would be useful for Chris, a member of uh, the planning commission and the planning director to get together with uh, the right person for the Neely to look both at, to to examine what the options are and to understand what would be if there's a if there's an option that is uh acceptable, that will address uh some of the concerns that we've heard. My concern is that noise, particularly at forty five D B A, is totally subjective. And that it has almost as much to do with how you're feeling about what you're listening to than it does about the volume of noise. Forty five D B A from a couple of hundred feet away should be almost well, I'd let Chris characterize it unless you really didn't want to hear that noise.
And it's like, I'm I'm okay with hearing the uh football games at Priory.
I I, which I am pretty sure is more than forty five D B A. You 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 think?
I'm agreeing with you.
I'm just reminded of a noise study that was involved with that uh at Logan Airport where Dorchester and Roxbury who were in the flight path were not the ones who were objecting, but if you know the area, it was uh Wellesley that was most unhappy uh about the uh about the change in flight path. And it was uh perhaps one of uh of expectation. Um, but I think here, having some involvement uh from uh uh, from staff, a member of the planning commission and uh uh, and our uh expert in the Neelys might uh might be helpful.
Okay, thank you, Nicholas. All right, any other questions for Chris? All right, John, you had some other issues you want to bring up?
I did. So so I thought um on the issue of food trucks, I'm guessing the Neelys would not have any problem of uh specifying a limited number. Are you thinking one or two? And that
One. Oh, sorry.
One. Okay, it's one or two, and that uh, you'll accommodate it from a parking perspective within uh the parameters you've already set out.
Yes.
You're saying yes, okay. So we can fix that in the uh the application, I assume. Um, and I think uh there was a proposal that we uh tighten the event language. I think that came from Judith. Um, and uh Judith, maybe you could give us some feeling for how to tighten that. I agree with you, by the way. I I I sort of followed it, but probably you have a better.
Yeah, well, the issue for me is again, if this travels with the property, what are we going to prevent? And, you know, right now I have a mindset that these are winery-related events, trying to engender a better understanding of the winery, a better connection with the winery. Those purposes I understand, but I'm still not sure what it means. You know, does it mean um small gatherings um for for some period of time? Or does it mean um, you know, a lot of entertainment, a lot of things, decorations outside? Um, those are the things that I think could really, I'm sure there's others. I I I'd have to think about it more to see what would bother me in terms of an event, but I just think that uh, there are things that we're all expecting an event to be and have been described, I think, by the Neelys, consistent with what we understand. But, you know, for example, private weddings shouldn't be, you know, uh, an event. Um, you know, these should be directed to the purposes that have been described as opposed to private parties, that type of thing. And there there may be language in there already protecting some of that. But because it's where it is, I think it's important to really try and drill down on what it is or what it isn't, whatever we can come up with as a group um to get the better line drawn. Go ahead, Craig.
Well, I mean, I thought that these, the events were just for wine club members. I mean, I thought that was the limitation.
But but could I get married there if I'm a wine club member? Could I have a family party there if I'm a wine club member? That's renting your facility out with some nexus to the winery, just on a personal basis versus, you know, something directed to the general membership. Um, which I think is more of what I'm envisioning, and maybe the rest of you might have something different, but that's what I'm trying to flesh out.
Okay, because I mean, at least some of them were pickup events. I thought they were pretty specific. Um, they were the three special events that I guess could potentially fall under your idea that was a little too varied. Um.
So so I was under the impression rightly or wrongly, that private events by the Neelys on their property were independent of this C U P.
That's my expectation. And the, so let me flesh out my worry. In some areas in the language I've seen, it's very clear it's going to have, there are going to be events and they will be these events. But I've also been reading some of the description and it talks about events generally. So it's really important for me to make sure that if you're talking about the events, it's this type of event every single time as opposed to inconsistencies in the references. And I I'd have to get back, I don't want to take time tonight to point out where I saw those. But, you know, per Craig's concern, is this the right number? Whatever we end up with as the wine club related stuff, I want that to be a limiting factor um and see if we pressure, make sure we pressure test it so it's working the way people are talking about it now.
Right. But on the same time, I I don't think anything we've done in the C U P limits their private use of the property. And I don't know if that's right or wrong, but I, that's my interpretation of what's going on here from a legal perspective. So so I think some of the big noise complaints had to do with a wedding that was a private event, and I think those might still occur.
At any property in town.
Exactly.
Yeah, that, I think that goes to the point that that somebody raised, I'm not sure who, like, I I've read all the complaints that there have been C U P violations. I don't have a view on it. I don't have enough information and I don't know who's investigated what. I just don't know. I'm not saying we want to invade their, you know, whatever is outside of the C U P, just to be clear. Um, but I was envisioning as to the C U P, let's make sure we're being tight. Thanks for that clarification, though, because I did not mean the private use.
Right.
And I guess what I'm interested in is the the barn was built with a C U P. So although I think they have rights to use their private residence for any party they want, is that true of the barn that's part of the C U P? In other words, those extra structures were built under a C U P. They weren't just generally approved. So I don't know, maybe Cara, could you speak to that?
If I could briefly um through the chair. Because the way that our um code regulates floor area, basically all large properties that are more than ten acres, the floor area has to be set by a C U P. So we want to make sure we're characterizing it that that the C U P that authorized um multiple buildings on the site, that's a required part of our process. So it wasn't to exceed something, it was a base requirement that large properties go through.
But because, and I'm I'm just, I I'm not sure what the right consequence of this is, but I'm just curious, because they're part of the C U P, can their use be limited? Period. I mean, like, can can they have, I mean, not that they would have fifteen weddings, I don't think they have fifteen children to get married, but, I mean, could they have a bunch of private weddings there as long as they're, you know, technically not being paid for it and they're they're just doing it as personal favors for friends? Or because this is part of the C U P, there'd be restrictions? Because I think that's what John is getting at is, you know, what's the difference between the winery part of this and the other potential personal uses of the property? So I don't know if anybody can help give you some, provide some insight.
You've made Laura think.
I would really have to think about it. I don't know if Cara has any immediate response, but we can certainly think about it. Um, and bring you back a a way to analyze that.
I mean, the real issue comes up here is, you know, the impact on the neighbors. So we're trying to deal with um us, you know, uh, coming up with a C U P that allows, you know, the wine tasting and events. And whether that makes sense or not. And we're kind of evaluating that, but also you know, the property, uh, I'm guessing also has, you know, private abilities separate from the C U P. Um, and when all is said and done, when you add it all up, how does it impact everyone else? Um, and, you know, is, how do we manage that? I think that's kind of what we're dealing with here. I I do think when all is said and done, you know, the Neelys have done a great job of trying to figure this out and we're kind of you know, in our plotting way, coming up with, oh, here's another nuance or how to deal with this. Um, so I'm sympathetic with that, but I think it's an interesting point to deal with.
Okay, well, why don't we put it on the list of things for Laura and Cara to get some more information on?
Oh, the other, the other thing was, um, sorry, the temporary lighting. Uh, I think, I don't know if we actually have to allow temporary lighting, but if we're uh setting this up for potentially evening hours where uh it's dark, having, allowing the the Neelys to set up some temporary lightings along the driveway and making sure that that's not blocked by somehow our ordinances, uh, I think that would be fine. Uh, and uh I'd want to make sure, we probably don't have to specifically allow that, but I want to make sure that it's uh, that's okay by us. That's it.
Um, I just a small thing Judith brought up adding the equestrian to the sign. I really like that. That seemed like a small thing.
Yeah, I'm sure they won't have any problem with that, right?
Nope.
You'll take care of it, Lucy?
Yeah, yes.
Next sign will have, the pose sign will have that on there.
Oh. Yeah, I want to re, I want to, sure, if I, if I can, am I talking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to show that um, it's Husco and Mary Huff D and all the equestrian community in Portola Valley, that the sign definitely will address the equestrian community. That point was raised before. I don't know why it wasn't incorporated in the new documents, but you know, those same times don't happen, but uh, those points are well taken and that will definitely happen.
No, no problem.
So where are we, Craig?
Um, well, I think we've got some concerns that I raised that I'd like to get answers to, um, for, for our next meeting or before our next meeting ideally, um, and then I think we've got issues of trying to resolve the impact. I mean, like I said, from my point of view, the current proposal, um, is, you know, too much impact, um, but I also would like to try to find a way through this. Um, you know, I appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this, um, so I guess I'd like to, to work toward, you know, like I said, some sort of smaller thing that we can ramp up. Um, I mean, it's easier to enforce that, um, and I think it'll give everybody, particularly the neighbors a chance to kind of get used to what's there. Cause some of this is change. And, and change is hard and I get that, um, and some of it can be real, like real impact. And I think we need to sort of modify this expansion as we understand the impact and, you know, just like your example of you know, temporary lighting. I mean, that sounds simple, but yeah, I think given we're a nice guy community, that, that's fraught with all sorts of, you know, its own sort of special things, um, so. So anyway, I, I, that's the, the other piece I'd like to get to, whether it's tonight or, you know, in our next meeting, but I think the concerns are things that Laura and Cara are going to have to go do some research on.
Well, I actually have a slightly different cut on, no, I have a different cut on that, Craig. I'd like to see us figure out how to move this forward versus delaying it through another meeting. And and, um, of the discussions that's come up, the major, the only one that I think of would, that actually would require us to delay trying to come up with forward movement has to do with the overall volume um, that you mentioned. And I'm okay with the overall volume as it's presented, just because it's small compared to uh, the current volume of traffic on, on our roads. Um, after that, I think all of the other pieces we've asked, you know, we've asked for checkpoints, we've asked for a number of things that I'm sure Laura has kept track of. Uh, that would, they would move into a proposal, uh, but if we can agree, well, I think the big issue we have to discuss here is where are we on volume? Um, and is it too much? And if so, I'd prefer us tonight to try to give some direction. Yea or nay on the total volume? So that we can move this proposal forward. And I know COVID has been a mess. But this has taken a long, long, long time for the Neelys to move this forward. And I think we have enough information to move forward.
Oh, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to continue. It's, um, you know, it's ten, almost ten forty. So I think that we have an opportunity to try to sort through some of these details. Um, now I think we're going to continue regardless, because we're going to have to give staff enough direction to you know, then, you know, try to write up the resolutions and stuff that we need.
So I think, so, sorry, Craig, I think they have enough, other than this total volume issue, I'm guessing they have enough information.
Um, okay. Well, I think the other thing I asked for was these alleged violations of the CUP. Um, I still don't understand that. I mean, I don't know whether it's valid or not, but it concerns me. Um, and it, at a minimum, I would expect we would use it to make sure we draft language. So there's not ambiguity. Cause I think that's what I heard from Lucy is she feels like they haven't been violating it, but you know, it's being interpreted differently by different people. That's fine. That, that's, that's an interpretation. I mean, I think Ward would say that it's clearly a violation and and it should be dealt with and that's, that's another opinion. So I, I don't feel like I've got enough information on that piece of it to make sure that any CUP we do in the future is not going to end up in this same kind of ambiguity. Um, and I'll call it alleged violation. I mean, like I said, I, I don't think there's a lot of ill will here, you know, I I think you characterized it before as somehow Kurt was going to have his like, you know, big evil master plan. I think that this is, that's not what's going on here. Um, but I do think that, um, I, I guess I'm disappointed that this thing that was apparently filed back in March or April has not been resolved and it's now November. So, so I think that's a piece of it. Um, the other piece with this, um, impervious, I think it was impervious surface, but one of the presentations was adding up some numbers and it was not clear how the new things that we wanted to do to add the parking and the wider driveway and stuff. If that was going to still meet this, and if it wasn't, are we willing to expand this beyond what it was before? Um, I'm also
On that one, can we ask Laura, um, what is the impervious surface, um, calculation for the proposal and the guidelines?
Um, so the impervious surface calculation doesn't include the driveway and we think it actually staff would think it would serve the project to go back and take a look at that. Um, and make sure that we can give a clear answer to the planning commission. So we would like to give you a clear answer for the next meeting. Um, I can speak to the code enforcement violation questions. I just didn't know to what degree the planning commission wanted me to. I can speak to them generally. Or I can give you specific information, um, in the next report, whatever your preference is.
No, I'd like to hear it now. If you have information.
Would I?
Okay. So generally speaking, um, as you know, there are two different CUPs. Um, when we read them, we do, staff does think that there is some confusing language between the two CUPs and that the way that they are written. So the way that staff reads it, we do think that the intent of the winery CUP was to prohibit customers to come to the whole property for tasting or purchasing of wine. But when we look at the specific language, um, that is within the twenty thirteen um, CUP amendment conditions. Um, we can also understand that the Neelys read that a different way because there's language that is somewhat contradictory um, within that. And so we do think that the, probably the events of the wine pickup events that have been happening are likely in staff's opinion in violation of the CUP. However, what we would do to resolve that is to bring it to the planning commission for the planning commission's check in consideration. That's what the step would be. So this CUP amendment application is already underway. And so we thought the right place for this discussion to happen is at the planning commission. Um, to discuss and provide clarity and to make sure we're crafting a conditional use permit, um, conditions that wouldn't have opportunity for misinterpretation going forward. Um, so that's the way that we were, that's the way that we were viewing it. Um, now in terms of the the time delay, um, at the time that this came in, we were, staff was very impacted by the pandemic. Um, the planning commission has heard some of this before. So our application volume was up twenty to fifty percent, um, while the pandemic was happening. So we did go to the council and get approval for additional resources. So we have added building official code enforcement and planning, um, department resources in the timeframe that this, um, has been going on. So our staff has been, our, our consultants have been to the site. We have taken pictures. We have investigated um, in, in terms of those preliminary looks at everything. So we do know, you know, what things require, um, some follow-up. So we're looking at the impervious surfaces and making sure those calculations are correct. There are accessory buildings on the property that were previously used for goats that do technically need building permits. So those do need to be addressed. Um, there's a small retaining wall at the patio area. Um, our assessment is that they did not require a building permit. So that part of it is fine. So we do have information and things that we need to follow up on. Um, it's, it's to be candid, it's not unusual on a large very large property to have things like, um, a goat structure. You know, that we may not be aware of. And when we become aware of it, then we ask, um, property owners to bring those things into compliance. So those, those small things on the property are, are fairly common when we're working with applicants. And so if there's a code enforcement complaint on those types of small things, we just go take a look at it. Accessory buildings, small retaining walls, small impervious surface increases, um, and take a look at them. So, uh, we need to make sure, see what the impervious surfaces are in this case. Um, so we're working on that part. But we, you know, we have been trying to, you know, reach, uh, understanding of what the conditions are on site. And there's been a question about when, what is the town's policy about when do we hold permits and not, um, process permits? So it's true that we do have a policy that if you have a code enforcement violation, that we don't process unrelated permits. Um, these permits are directly related to the issues that are at hand with the code enforcement complaint. So we do process permits that are intended to resolve any kind of violation. So if we found that they added impervious surface, and I think they did, I think they've told us, um, that they added impervious surface. So this, this permit would resolve that. Um, so that's a common course of action um, that we become aware of something and then we use the permit process to resolve it. So we think that there's ambiguity in the conditional use permit. We can explain that, you know, the details are not more to you. But really from our perspective, the idea was to either craft a new conditional use permit if the planning commission wishes to approve it. If the planning commission did not approve an amendment to the conditional use permit, then we would go into a monitoring um, phase of the existing conditional use permit and enforce the existing conditions. So that, that's generally speaking, um, where staff was coming from.
Okay. So do you feel like with the new amendments, um, and the, um, sort of research that you're doing, that we'll be able to resolve um, the issues that were on the code violation complaint?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I mean, that's, I mean, that's really what I care about. I care about going forward that we craft the CUPs in such a way that we don't have another code enforcement action like the minute we end up approving these new CUPs.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's certainly the goal because I think reasonable people could disagree on implementation of certain CUP provisions. And so we want to learn from that experience and write them in a way that we have a shared understanding between the planning commission and the applicant um, about exactly what's proved. And then that would be enforceable, um, moving forward because we would have that clarity.
Okay. Uh, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. So what I'm looking for here, so you know, we can't, we can't see, uh, Commissioner Targ, cause he's just a picture. Oh, no, he's not.
Just very, very stiff.
He's still, yes, okay. Anyway, the, so what I was trying to figure out was could we come up with something that, you know, has the potential for the next meeting, this actually gets approved or disapproved? And I saw Craig and Judith um, potentially asking for information and I couldn't see Nicholas. He might, but he maybe he was there, but I, he was still, so.
Just to, to avoid any doubt, uh, this, you know, five feet meetings is, uh, is, is too many. Uh, we should have a vote at this coming meeting. Uh, up or down, this is, this is, this has gone on too long and I think we've isolated the issues.
That's where I'm going. So, so the question is, you know, Craig and Judith, can you provide enough information about your concerns such that, you know, Laura can put together something for us to deal with next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, personally, I don't think I've been all that ambiguous and, and I'm definitely not trying to raise ambiguous issues to prolong across us. I want an up or down vote at the next meeting if, if, you know, absent something unheard of coming out. Uh, I would have liked for the feedback to be taken back and for, for the Neelys to see if they have a preference on, you know, where to trim back. I think trimming back makes sense, given the importance to the community, given the need for people to get comfortable and have this play out. So I think some trim back would be recommended. Um, but if they think, you know, for, have a good reason, I, I'd hear them out, but I don't see why we couldn't resolve that at a meeting where there's an interactive discussion of that. Um, Craig, I don't know if you have a different view?
Uh, no, I, I think, again, I, I was just proposing that we give everybody a chance to sort of think on it, but I, I'm willing to sort of continue and see if we can, you know, come up with some stuff even now if we want in real time. I mean, that, I think depends on the applicant and it depends on our willingness to, to push forward, um. I, I know for myself, I, I mean, I, I would like to see it significantly scaled back and then ramp forward. Uh, you know, I'd like to see like one evening event and see how that goes. Uh, I'd like to see something more in the order of four events a year and limit the total number of days of wine tasting. And I don't know if it's Thursday through Sunday, or you know, we just don't do it in the winter or, but just something to sort of reduce the overall impact. Um, and then basically have a review in the fall and, and look and see how it went through the summer and then expand it from there. Um, but I just feel like the current request of ten events and as far as I can tell, it is pretty much three sixty-five in terms of the tasting. Um, cause it's kind of all the, all the time, um, except for when there's events, um, that just feels like too much to me. So, you know, I'd be willing to talk to the Neelys. We could talk about this interactively. I mean, I'm not sure how to sort of move forward, but, but I'd be much more comfortable and I think we would get better community buy-in if we started with something smaller with a commitment to look at it with the intent to expand it if it's going well. Cause I also understand the Neelys are trying to get what they think they need. Um, but some of this stuff, I mean, I gotta say, you know, I, I said this before and even at the beginning, I mean, to me, wine pickup, you can ship boxes or you can have them somewhere else. There's other, I mean, there's plenty of other wineries that solve the problem of, you know, wine pickup without having to sort of be quote unquote at the winery. Um, so I think if we reduce the number of events, we could still get some of that. We got to see the winery and there's still enough tastings that people in the wine club could come out and still enjoy the winery. So I feel like we can get most of what they need. But in a greatly reduced impact, um, to the community.
So I, um, I'm bummed that this, uh, views coming up at this, uh, fifth meeting, I feel like we talked many, many other meetings about what a suitable number is. And the Neelys have come down on the request quite dramatically based on our feedback. If you only wanted one, I feel like, uh, we should have told them that, you know, two meetings ago. Um, I actually think they have scaled it down and it's a suitable number, uh, even for starting. So I'd like to see us entertain the, the proposal mostly as it is on the table right now.
And, and I, I don't feel like, I mean, I would have said four from the beginning and this is five that I'm proposing with the opportunity to open it up more. So I, I, I don't feel like we've ever, I mean, the number of events and the number of people and all of us, this stuff has over the last year has changed so many times, I can't even keep track of the number of times it's changed. So I think we're now trying to craft something where we can make a decision and give staff some guidance. So this seems like the perfect time to have this discussion.
Yeah. Nicholas, where are you?
Uh, I'm troubled by the idea that there are impacts based on the, uh, reports that we've received. Uh, there's whether given the, uh, rather remarkable record supporting the categorical exemption, uh, that finds there is no impact. I, um, I, I'm feeling pretty, pretty I'm feeling pretty, pretty good about where we are. The primary issues in my mind again are on safety and again, we should have confirmation that the steps that were recommended have in fact been included in the proposal. And we have the calling out of horses, which seems appropriate. We have an issue of noise, forty-five dB a is hardly, is, is, is a near whisper. But and granted, there's a lot of subjectivity there. If the Neelies were able to find a dedicated location or figure out screening to baffle the noise, that would be fine. If we are able to find a reduction by some small number of intensity of use and that's acceptable to the Neelie, I would be fine with that and it would be nice to have a consensus. If we weren't able to do that and in the absence and Judith's cautionary note is exactly right, the absence of additional information coming up. I think that I wouldn't have a problem supporting the application pretty much as is. I think that it sounds like there is ambiguity between the two CUPs. I'm not hearing that the town has found that there's a violation, but I'm hearing that one could make a reasoned argument in either direction and it would be nice to square up those cards as well. I again, recommend that there be a conversation perhaps between a couple of the planning commissioners and the Neelies and the noise consultant and staff, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, does not create a Brown Act issue. And then we come back with as close to a resolution as we can and move forward really expeditiously.
So I guess I'm hoping that we can send staff off with enough information to actually create a draft resolution for our next meeting.
I fully expected they would.
Yes, okay. And not that we might modify that at the meeting with the idea being that we'll make a final conclusion at the next meeting.
Oh, John, you know me better than that. I'm not going to make a statement that I'm not going to modify something or have a condition.
I allowed you to modify it. Yeah, but yeah, you're right. You're a lawyer.
May I respond through the chair to some of these discussions? Just clarify. Um, so Commissioner Targ just brought up about the food truck. If you look in our plans, we do have the food truck cited in a very particular space and we propose a particular kind of screening using a certain number of hay bales. If the food truck does not have one of the whisper quiet generators. So we've talked about that and I just want to clarify in terms of the number of events. These six wine club distribution days take place on three weekends. They are related to three wine club releases. We plan to have annually. Currently, we have two regular wine club releases and we find that not to be enough. For our business plan, we would like to increase to three wine club events. So the six distribution days are related to those three wine club events. Two distribution, distribution days for each wine club release so as not to overwhelm the site on one day. But those two days are one weekend. So these larger events that we're talking about are three weekends a year. And, you know, through the chair, with respect, Commissioner Taylor, I am a little confused about your concern about impacts. I'm just honestly curious. I don't understand because I hear you saying that the impact is too great for the benefit. And first, I think you're underestimating the benefit. And second, I'm just actually unclear about the impacts that you're talking about. I've heard you talk about noise, but I've also seen these robust noise traffic and biological impact studies. So I'm, I'm just honestly confused and somewhat curious what the impacts are that you are referring to. You've described noise, but other than that, it's pretty vague. And also, you know, in terms of reducing our numbers, we feel like we're at a, a pretty, we're at quite low numbers already. Just for a point of comparison, the maximum regular weekly traffic that we're requesting is approximately three percent of the Alpine Inn's summer traffic this year. And certainly single digits of the Windy Hill Open Space Preserve. So again, just getting back to impacts, I think as these third party studies have showed, our impacts will be relatively minimal compared to other uses already very actively happening in the area. And then I'm sure that you can understand that we are, we would be hesitant to come up with a piecemeal solution. I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Taylor, in terms of ramping up. But you know, we've already, we applied for this permit. It's a permanent amendment three years ago. So the idea of, you know, slowly ramping up is really not great for our business right now. And I know that's not your priority, but I'm just explaining why we might not be enthusiastic about that possibility. So yeah, I've, I, I explained why the daytime events feel necessary. I think if we were going to reduce, we could, you know, maybe jettison one of the nighttime events. But the daytime events feel pretty necessary in terms of our release plans.
Well, yeah, thank you for that.
So, and I see my dad raising a hand. Maybe I missed something.
I know, but well, I was gonna say, I don't know if I want to miss. So don't make it too long, Kirk, because I want to respond to Lucy. Otherwise, this is gonna be, this might get too long.
And he, and he'll forget what Lucy said.
Dad, you're also on mute.
Yeah.
Okay, now he's gone still.
My take is a little different about the ramping up and that is that we are actually going to naturally ramp up rather slowly. We're not going to go zero to sixty any, you know, immediately in terms of visits. So I think there, I think even a year's check in from now will give us information on a ramp up that won't be completed yet. So I think it's built into what's going to happen because, because the market is going to be slow, the word of mouth is going to be slow and so forth. I think you're going to get your wish there in terms of automatic getting a ramp up. And then as for the noise impacts and, you know, all the best management practices about noise have already been incorporated into the proposal. We met with, we met with Chris onsite and talked about all these details, where to locate and how to orient the music, where to put the food truck, all those aspects of it. They're all built into it already. So the terms and conditions are already two thirds of the way there. If you take a look at what they wrote up and then obviously we need some more details, but there's a lot more there in place already. So, thank you.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like a lot of these details are in our proposal and are, are in the conversation already. It's just a matter of bringing them into the terms and conditions in a way that is satisfactory to the planning commission.
Yeah, agreed. So I guess, you know, you're asking what my concerns are. So, you know, there's a certain serenity in Portola Valley and along the scenic corridor. And now we're proposing a fairly substantial activity. I mean, I know you were saying, oh, it's not that much compared to this or that, but I, I still think it's fairly substantial. I'm actually fairly comfortable if we limit six of those events to being three weekends, because that's not quite the way they're spelled out right now. That may be your intent, but I don't think that the language I saw necessarily had it explicitly as, you know, a single weekend. So it's really what you're saying is three single weekends. And then the other thing I would be comfortable with is, I mean, maybe we start with one special event and, and maybe you know, in the fall, we decide if we go with another one. I mean, I'm not looking for a ramp that's super slow. There we go. Oh, we can't do anything for six months and then you can only do one more thing and then one more thing. It takes 10 years to get to something reasonable. But I'm also trying to be cognizant of all the community feedback that we got and give people a feeling that, that there's some ability to absorb this. And, and I think that's really what I'm trying to capture here. So you know, the three pickups, you know, the six pickups on three weekends, I, I can deal with that. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me. But the night stuff, I, I'm super sensitive to noise at night. I mean, Portola Valley, it's a nice guy city. It's super quiet. You can hear the crickets. It's really hard to have an event and not make too much noise. And, you know, John was saying he loves the prairie football games. That's kind of awesome, but he moved in knowing the prairie was there. Whereas I think you've got a lot of neighbors that moved in and there wasn't a barn and there wasn't a winery and there certainly wasn't wine tasting. So I'm not sure that, that's the one I'd like to see ramp up because that, that's the one that for me feels sort of most problematic. I love your idea of a community day. To me, that is, you know, when you brought this stuff to us two years ago, two plus years ago, I mean, you had multiple community days. And I realize you sort of scaled that stuff back because you were trying to deal with less impact and I appreciate that. But in some level, the community day has always in my mind been one of your sort of greater assets that you're bringing to the community.
Craig, I just want to let you know that when we have had these wine club days, they really feel like community days. Already.
Yeah, I mean, if you're part of the wine club.
Just, just putting that out there. Yeah.
Right, but I mean, just to be clear, we have several thousand people in the valley and how many people in the wine club? That are, that live in the valley?
Yes, you're saying it's not invite, the whole community is not invited at this point.
Yeah, and, and, and I get it. That was one of the, you were trying to limit it to what you needed for a business. But so to me, that has less community benefit, even though it might feel like to you that you've got all your friends and neighbors there because you have your wine club members there. So anyway, I think we're getting a little bit off track.
So Lucy, are you okay changing that wording to three weekends instead of six days? I think it's written now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
So that seems easy.
Yeah.
That seems straightforward if Lucy didn't and Kirk don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, no problem. That's, that's, we feel like that's how it is in the proposal, but.
The way it is already.
Clarify more would be great. That's our intention.
Yeah, I think this goes to Commissioner Haskell's comment about providing clarity about exactly what is proposed for events, what would be included and not included. Yeah, so I think that's a very good.
But it's not just the three weekends. It's a little bit more clarity about what is included in those weekends, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And people, you know.
It's, it's my, it's my fault basically. It's my fault because I write the proposals and I'm known, I write the proposal. I'm known for being way too brief. So.
Yeah.
A little more.
That's a good business.
The two other things that, the two other things that I heard were one is that there is an understanding of where musicians would be and what appropriate baffling is and that says a, in an operational document and that should be moved into the CUP itself as a term and that that was acceptable.
Yes. And I think we've also gotten to the point of whatever we call them checkpoints. I think I was proposing a significant one after a full year of operations, presumably next year, if this were to move forward about whether or not things had progressed as planned, which relates to the big issues of traffic and parking and noise. And I know you have specific plans that are terrific to try to deal with those. But what we'd be dealing with at that checkpoint would be the objectives in the sense of no parking on Portola Road, noise within acceptable limits. And I guess we'll have to go with the objective limits. But I'd still love to hear neighbor comments on that moving forward.
So John, I mean, what if we had three, three weekends, one community day and one evening and we reviewed this next fall? And there is and, and if it can be a year, I mean, if it's November, I don't really care, but I mean, I want to get through a summer session. And then if that looks good, then we could increase the number of evening events. Like I, I'd still like to see us ramp this up, give the neighbors a chance to acclimate to this. I, I, I think it's important. I think it's I mean, from my point of view, one of the things I try to accomplish in these meetings is that we get community consensus and, and, you know, Lucy, I very much feel like you're in that place as well. That you, you know, you really try to be a good community citizen and I appreciate that. And I'm trying to find a way that we can bring both the positive people and the naysayers along in a way that they can maybe be, maybe a little bit grudgingly, but they can go, wow, all right, let's try it and then feel like they have some say if it's not working out. And if it is.
So the problem, the problem I have with that Craig is that I'm pretty sure the naysayers are gonna complain about the two events a year versus the four events a year.
Let's try.
Well, or we just do the four and evaluate whether or not it exceeded what we needed. I think you know, and, and it's not a I know you're big on community consensus, but we're talking about property rights here. And I bet it's back to my point about it's not a vote. You know, we had people coming in and saying, well, this many people said it was good. This many people said it was bad. That's pretty much irrelevant. It's what's allowed from the property and the purchase and the property rights. So you know, if a thousand people came in and told us we should do something illegal, are we going to do it? No, it, it doesn't really matter. It's not a vote.
Okay, but I, I, and I don't think I'm proposing it to vote, but I'm proposing that you can bring a community along. I think it's important in a community. Otherwise, I mean, I think you could make a really meaningful plan. And I think a bunch of people have made that argument. A perfectly legal argument. It's not a vote. It has nothing to do with voting. It has to do with having people see this project for what I think the Neelies wanted to be is I think they wanted to be something that not is just their private enterprise, but is something that's valued in the community. And I think we have an opportunity to do both. So I guess I put this more to the Neelies is I realize I'm proposing something that restricts you, but I think I'm trying to do this in good service to you, not in just to, to tie your hands. Like that's not really my goal here. I, I really think that if we can find the right way through, that we'll end up with something that's better for everybody and that you'll get more of what you want. So I'd be interested in Lucy or Kirk or Holly, I mean, you know, join in. I, I'm, I'm really trying to get us to the, the best place.
Craig, I totally understand that you are coming from a place of good intention and really trying to respect and honor all community members and I really appreciate that. And you're right, I am a really community oriented person and I really believe in a sweet spot where our, where everybody's needs can be met. This process has also, you know, I, has tarnished my, you know, I just think consensus is really difficult. I appreciated something that was said in the Housing Equity Committee or the Housing Element Committee about, you know, satisfying eighty-nine point nine percent of people in that difficult conversation. I just about, you know, satisfying eighty nine point nine percent of people in that difficult conversation. I just think a hundred percent is um, I'm just speaking personally. I I I agree with what Commissioner Golden said, that uh, no matter how we comport ourselves, uh, the people who are, uh, you know, very opposed to us at this moment, I don't think they'll change their minds.
Yeah, and I guess I wanted to be clear. I'm not looking for if we evaluate this, you know, after the summer, that I I mean, if people come back and just say, well, we don't like it because we don't like it, like, then too bad. I mean, we move forward. I'm looking more for they come back and say, and and I'm not accusing you of this, but just I'm taking the negative here for a moment. They come back and say, look, the traffic was, I mean, despite all these studies, it was, these were all the problems we had. And this music was way too loud, and then gives us an opportunity to sit down with you guys and figure out how to make it better. And it gives the people who feel uneasy about this an an opportunity to believe that they're going to get some say. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, but I'm not looking for a vote. It doesn't, I agree with you. I I think there's some people who are going to never agree with this project because they just don't like it. And that that's fine. That's not me. That's not what I'm trying to get at here.
You know, I feel like. One thing to keep in mind here is I do think there's a difference between the evening events and the daytime events. That that's a substantive difference and is driving me to be more conservative on the evening events. Now, could there be moving one of them to be earlier? Can you move the hour a little earlier? I think that's the piece for me that community members might rightly have different different reactions to. I'm not trying to solve, and I don't like the implication that we're trying to put this to a vote. Because we're not. I'm focused on safety. I'm focused on trying to accommodate what's reasonable, and you have done a lot of that. So um, that to me, it's a near hour issue than it's being portrayed right now, and I think we're really close.
Through the chair. Um, would this be a good time? I think staff has really received a lot of very good feedback um, and direction from the Planning Commission. And I I would imagine that the Neelies need an opportunity to think about this a little bit and the feedback um, that they've received. So this, it might be an appropriate time um, for us to break the conversation and continue the public hearing, and then staff could work with the Neelies um, on implementing these things and getting that information together and bring it forward in a resolution form.
Wow, you guys, I really want to decide it now. I feel like um, the community had a lot of opinions. It was actually so great to have so many people here. But, you know, it it's kind of, people have strong feelings on both sides. I feel like the one obligation we have is to be thoughtful, think about it, but then make decisions, right? The um, if we have another meeting where there's not a clear resolution on the table, um, you know, we'll have, people will continue to want to really express their opinions. And same with the um, having just a few events and then later planning to expand it. I think every one of those meetings just is a chance for people to think, no, we haven't made a decision yet. They're going to come out and tell us what they think. I really think we should make a decision on this number and then use the CUP process to um, I mean, the review process in a year to tweak and modify it if things haven't gone well. I think the four events is small, even, I don't think we're doing this, but even if we've goofed a little and they are too noisy. You know, it's don't don't your neighbors have dinner parties more than four times a year? I and things that you hear and practice music? I just don't think four times a year is a terrible thing to live with. You know, I don't want it to be annoying and sound like a big party every night, but you know, an event with unamplified music. I I I think we can make a decision.
By the way, it's only three, it's only three evening events.
Oh, thank you. Good, that's right. And then one was the community was before. Yeah.
Yeah, so i- if I may, I don't think we're teed up to make a decision this evening, and hopefully the meeting was noticed this that way.
No, I mean, uh, give staff a clear marching orders for a resolution that we're all prepared to vote on. I realize we might not get five to zero, but um, have something that's on the table for the next meeting, which is not too far away, let's say.
Respectfully, I think that it is uh, eleven fifteen. And if I were the applicant and I heard what I'm hearing right now, I I think that I would appreciate the Planning Director's suggestion that we uh, that we table it for the moment and that they take it up in the morning uh, potentially with the input of a uh, Planning Commissioner uh, or two uh, who has spoken. I think that it would be challenging to get from here to there. And I believe we have an opportunity to have something that's either consensus or closer to a consensus as uh, Commissioner Haskell mentioned.
But the objective would be a resolution for the next meeting that we decide upon.
I think that we, the objective is to, not the objective, I I think that we would be agendized for a vote at this coming meeting.
Okay.
And to be.
I think that's consistent with what Ann suggested, and I would like to see.
I think that we can do that, but what I would not like to do is try to iron out the uh, last ten yards at now eleven twenty.
Really, why not? I feel like uh, it's good to iron these things out because otherwise, uh, you know, you start another meeting with new people and yeah, we we got the issues all in our head right now.
Well, I think it is the same people. I mean, it's going to be us and the Neelies. I mean, I I personally like Nicholas's suggestion. I I also, I mean, I think this is up to the applicant, but I'm kind of with Nicholas. It's eleven fifteen. And I don't feel comfortable putting the applicant on the hot spot and saying, well, we're going to negotiate with you until you're exhausted. That doesn't feel right to me. Um, I'd rather, I mean, I'm happy to meet with them. I could, Laura and and one other commissioner could join me. And we could meet tomorrow or later this week and see if we can work something out. Um.
I mean, isn't the, isn't the only, isn't the only issue? The only issue left? The numbers?
I think we have the numbers um, is it basically.
Oh, you asked for some some fallback on the 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 uh, potential issues, right? Impervious services and violations.
Oh, I thought we clarified that one, though Laura pointed out that there, first of all, there's ambiguity in the duplicate, or not duplicate, two CUPs. And then this new potential CUP we're voting on would clear it up, so.
Right, so I I think we did agree on that, but there's still impervious surface. There's still mid.
Oh, I thought, no, I thought impervious surface was included in that there's calculations that they need to do, um, and this CUP would uh, capture the impervious surface topic also. Is that right, Laura?
Yeah, we just want to verify to make sure that we've got it accurate in the records, impervious surface. I I do think that we have a list of, you know, the small and medium things that the Planning Commission was asking for. I mean, I think we felt confident about that, and we would be able to address those items and provide more detail. If, you know, that way the Planning Commission could have that information in crafting final terms and conditions.
Right, so the, it's true, the only thing left is whether it's three evening events or one and then expand later, right?
I I don't, I don't know that that's correct. I think that I may have heard something different from uh, from one of the other planning commissioners. I, and I I can't impress upon you. I'm hearing two of our brothers and sisters who want to uh, move this along and to have a moment to think, I think there's value in having the Neelies uh, consider it and uh, my uh, uh, my, my, my strong deference is to uh, our, our two planning commissioners who are looking for a little bit uh, more time to 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 explore what options there may be.
But I just ask one question, though. Let's just say theoretically that we decided to delay implementation of one, two, or three of the evening events for a year. What then are the criteria a year from now for going ahead with those events or not? I mean, that's a more difficult question than making a decision to modify.
Mr. Neely, I I suggest that that would be an excellent conversation to have with uh, one or more of the planning commissioners and the planning director.
We're more than happy. You set the time in the name of the commissioner.
That's uh, that up to the chair, of course.
Can I suggest that um, Judith and myself meet with the applicant and we talk through this issue? I mean, I feel like we're very close. If you guys are comfortable to do, we'll meet with Laura. We'll, we'll find a time and and we'll do it. I mean, I can do it this week. I don't know what your schedule looks like, Judith, but I'm, I'm definitely on board for, let's move this thing forward.
Through the, through the chair, um, not, not to be too presumptuous here, but um, Commissioner Haskell and Commissioner Taylor, you seem grouped in terms of your concern. I think our preference would be to have in the group have one of you as commissioners and then may maybe another commissioner instead of uh, you know, just.
If I, if I may, that's a better uh, decision for the planning uh, commission, but we appreciate your thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm happy with that as well. I I picked the two of us um, because we were grouped. And I thought that we probably are the ones that current, I mean, I think everybody else would go along with your current proposal. So I think that we're the two that if we can work together and come up with something, then we could have um, a unanimous vote, which is why I picked the two of us. But I'm happy splitting it if if you're uncomfortable with it. I I was, I was not trying to stack the deck against you.
Just looking for diversity. Um, do we need to decide the commissioners right now?
I think that the chair will figure it out and 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 that, and that y'all should get together at your earliest opportunity and schedule. Or.
I'm certainly available. I'm guessing Ann is also available.
Actually, I'm not. I have to go away.
Okay, I'm available.
It'd be great if John could do it.
All right, well, let me suggest, Lucy, I'll give you a call tomorrow. We'll talk about this, okay?
Sounds great, Craig. I look forward to speaking.
Okay, so Laura, is this an appropriate time to continue the hearing?
Yes, our recommendation would be to continue the public hearing to the November seventeenth meeting, which is just two weeks from now. Um, and staff would prepare a resolution, integrate all of this feedback. Um, and then the Neelies can make final decisions on what their proposal would include. And then the Planning Commission could discuss that resolution and the terms and conditions at that meeting.
Okay, so we need a motion to that effect, yes?
Yes.
I would uh, move, 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 move as stated capably by our planning director. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Laura, could, well, let me, is there any discussion? Okay. We're moving by, uh, Laura, a little call, please?
Commissioner Tark?
Hi.
Commissioner Golden?
Hi.
Commissioner Haskell?
Hi.
Vice Chair Kofsl?
Hi.
Sarah Taylor?
Hi. Okay, great. Um, well, again, uh, to the Neelies, thank you for your persistence uh, and and sort of staying here late. We've got thirty odd attendees. Thank you to the public. Um, we're going to move on to the next item of the Planning Commission, and and certainly, Neelies, feel free to drop off. You don't have to hang around for the rest of our meeting, so, good night.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm sorry, there's one, one, uh, are are we going to be continuing this to a date uh, certain or?
Yes, November seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't hear that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone who's still present. Um, I'd like to move on to commission reports. So, are there any commission reports?
I suppose the only one I might have is that I was actually at the ASCC meeting that discussed this um, item, and uh, a- as it was presented, uh, everybody was fine in terms of uh, moving forward. Uh, there was a big concern on the ASCC uh, multiple times, trying to reiterate to the public that they were not trying to decide on the project overall, and that they really didn't want um, comments that related to the Planning Commission. Which the vast majority of the comments related to the Planning Commission. Uh, the major issue that came up was the sign on the street side and its placement. And uh, the there was a discussion of should it be in or out, more prominent or not? And the final discussion ended up along the lines of actually being closer to the street was better, which is required the ingress requirement. Uh, because that would prevent the traffic issue of searching for the entrance. Uh, and the one thing they didn't note was that the sign that they're proposing is pretty much the same as the open space sign. So if you hadn't noticed the open space sign, what we're proposing here is the open space sign.
Thank you. Any other commission reports? Then, um, any public comment on the commission reports? I see two hands up, but I'm taking public comment on the commission reports. So Laura, do you have comments on the commission reports?
In some sense, I do. I'm sorry for prolonging the meeting, but I I I think I've held this hand for ninety minutes. And I wanted to ask about the collaboration with the noise consultant. I think actually he dropped off, but I have a question. The death points are for. Sorry.
Laura, Laura, I'm going to ask that you send that to us in writing. Um, the way this worked was when I closed the public comment, that that was sort of the end of questions from the public on the Neelie project. So if you want to send us an email um, to the, to the planning staff, then we can deal with that there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then Christie, is this a comment on the commission reports?
I also felt that the noise um, report happened in the middle of your commission discussion, and we didn't get to hear it or comment. I mean, we didn't get to comment on it. Would have been nice to hear it ahead of time, so then we could have also commented.
So, Krista, I'm going to ask you to send it to us an email. The noise r- report actually was in the packet. Um, so it's just, this is the structure that we have for these meetings, just to keep them from sort of turning into chaos. So I understand it's a little bit frustrating, but it just, it is the the process that we use.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so seeing no other hands up for commission reports, I'll move on to staff reports.
I do not have any report for you this evening.
I I'm not disappointed. Thank you. All right, um, moving on to approval. Oh, well, there any, well, I think there, can there be public comments about a staff report that doesn't exist? Seems like not really. So, okay, so I'm going to move on to um, the Planning Commission mi- minutes from October twentieth. Are there any comments? Possibly starting with Judith.
Yeah, uh, read page six fifty-two, uh, Mary Huffty's name is spelled wrong in the middle of the page. So just correct her name.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Ann?
No.
John?
Craig, my internet has gone unstable, and I'm not sure if I can.
I I'm going to go on to Nicholas. I'll come back to you. Nicholas, do you have any comments on the minutes?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right, John.
I I was not at that meeting, so I would abstain on any discussion on the minutes.
Okay, great. All right, um, I've got two hands up. Um, this is basically comments on the minutes from October twentieth. Rena?
Hi, yes, I'm still here.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to mention that the um, the minutes, as I said earlier, the minutes don't actually reflect and. I'm not looking for a word for word from the people that do uh, comment, but more. Of what they've said so that the people that weren't participating like tonight uh, don't have to. You know, watch uh, this many hours of uh, recording. To, to see what the residents, their fellow residents said, but just a, just a little bit more. You're almost there and really appreciate. The meeting attendee number. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Even though it says thirty right now and we're down to twelve, but it was.
That's okay. It's, it's more of a, of a sense, especially within the height of the meeting.
I think it was working well at the height of the meeting. It's just.
It's appreciated. It's more than what we've been getting, so thank you.
Yeah, well, we're trying, so, okay. Leslie, you got comments on the minutes of the, from the twentieth? Might still be.
Yes, sorry. It's late. Um, and thirty of us are still here. Oh, it just dropped to twelve.
It's twelve.
It's just a correction. My name is L E S L I E. Not L E Y and it's K R U T. You can find that in the minutes.
Yep, you got it.
Okay, all right, and I appreciate also the number, although it would be great to see the names of people. Because when we're in the room with them, we know who we're with.
Yeah, I, I, I think we all agree with you. It's, it's been technically challenging. We, we continue to try to improve it. And I'm hoping by the time we get to a. Sort of split. In person and remote that we solve this problem because, yeah, I, I completely agree. We, we want to know who's in the meeting with us, so we're, we're working on it.
Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be in real time, even if it's in the minutes that come out, because you see the people, right? You see. Yes.
It's like, the problem is it fluctuates, so it might be hard to get the exact, you know, like, there's people that are there and not there, but. Yeah, maybe we can find a way to put in, you know, at a certain time, these are the people that were at the meeting. I'll have to, I'll talk with Laura.
Not everybody has their real name. So you don't know, yeah, whatever name they put in is what you see.
Yeah, I've gotten better at that. I just want to say that, and I spoke to, I think, I can't remember what meeting it was. I thought it was your meeting, but. Um, you weren't there. Oh, that at the committee meetings, there was a box where we could see hands raised and all the names were down the side. So.
Yeah, in the committees.
It was traffic meeting.
Right, but I'm just saying, in the committees, they're doing them as open meetings, but in the commissions, we do it as analysts.
Yeah.
Um, because you know, the, but both the commissions are a more formal decision-making body, so it. It's a little bit different. So like I said, we're, we're improving it as we can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so seeing no more public comment, um, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of October twentieth?
I'll make that motion.
Nicholas has seconded. Any more further discussion? All right, Laura, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden. You're abstaining.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haskell.
Hi.
Commissioner Tark.
Hi.
Vice Chair Kofstil.
Hi.
Sarah Taylor.
Hi.
All right, great. Well, it's late. Thank you all for your participation. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Get together tomorrow and figure out the details of what we gotta track down here.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.